We're gonna move right to agenda adoption. We don't need agenda changes this evening. You're not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is. You got a motion on the floor? If that's properly segmented, I'm gonna go with all in favor say aye, because I don't have my cheat sheet. So I'm gonna have to build a cheat sheet real quick. Yeah, we better do that real quick. Yes, there was, for a second, we have a little cheat sheet that seems not with us today. Did I see Troy on?
See Troy or Rick present in the meeting at this.
So Rick just popped in and must have fell back out, because I saw him a second ago.
I'm working with Rick right now.
Alright, so Rick is here. So it looks like Troy is the only one absent. I wasn't aware that he was gonna be off today, but we'll go with that. So, again, we just approved agenda with everybody saying aye that's available. Minus Troy and Rick who fell off. Let's go right to the indication. I was gonna have Pastor Watkins, but I don't see him on, so I'll go ahead and tell you that. When we come to you asking for your blessings and help as we gather together, we pray for guidance in matters at hand and ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with the spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us a desire to find ways to excel in our work. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we challenge each other to reach higher and farther to be the best that we can be. We ask this in his name. Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Alright, I got a proclamation to read and we're gonna run into a special presentation. It's alcohol awareness month. Whereas across the state and nation, alcohol misuse is a major public health problem that affects people of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds. Whereas the level of excessive drinking has been trending up in recent years. And excessive drinking is defined by the Centers of Disease Control Prevention as binge drinking, heavy drinking, and any drinking by pregnant women or by younger than 21. Whereas excessive alcohol consumption is associated with risk to behavior, violence, suicide, homicide, and vehicular accidents as the third leading cause of preventable deaths in North Carolina. And whereas excessive consumption in North Carolina costs over $7 billion a year in healthcare costs, including fetal alcohol disorders, criminal justice expense, lost productivity at work, and motor vehicle crash costs. And whereas neuroscience tells us that the development adolescent brain is far more sensitive to alcohol than the mature adult brain, and underage drinking can usually, can, excuse me, underage alcohol use can negatively impact student success and athletic performance. And whereas robust prevention efforts by collaborating agencies and organizations in North Carolina have helped raise the average age at which young people begin to use alcohol. Yet 27% of high school students still report drinking in the last 30 days. And that number, 44%, report binge drinking in the past 30 days. Whereas it's important to recognize the collective impact of parents, teachers, coaches, medical professionals, faith leaders, and public and private organizations and institutions to support early education about alcoholism and addiction and provide hope and help and healing for those in our communities who are facing challenges with alcohol use and misuse. Therefore, I, Steve Shawshank, Mayor of Harrisburg, hereby proclaim the month of April as alcohol awareness month. Alright, next up, we're gonna need some folks, James or whoever's driving. So we've got David Baxter up in line. David, are you aware that anybody else is with us? If somebody can look Pastor Watkins and see where this?
No, he is in Georgia.
Oh, that's right. So are you taking his pieces parts?
I can.
I'll tee this up as soon as I get to my little cheat sheet that he was gracious about to make us. There it is.
I mean, I could do that really quickly. That's quite.
I'll do the intro and then you can take it from there. So, this is the racial equity task force. It's a subgroup. It's actually for the police. And what we did was, our attempt was to look at law enforcement, the judicial system, and the prison system. But this, what we're talking about today, is specific to law enforcement within Harrisburg. It actually obviously Cabarrus County, since it kind of obviously overlapped. Our objective was to develop recommendations to move Harrisburg law enforcement closer to the ideals of racial equity, develop recommendations to improvement of relationships engaged between law enforcement officers and the Harrisburg community. The team members of this group is David Baxter is on the phone, Kyle Felder, Chris Meesor, our lieutenant, myself, and Pastor Watkins. And what I'll do is, I got a chance to send it out through my emails. So I'll have fun. But I'll send out kind of a different slice and dice from Survey Monkey that actually breaks our survey answers by race within our own community. So give you kind of a perspective. This is not gonna go into details of the actual survey, but the recommendations as a result of that survey. What we found, and you heard from David, we did get over almost 400 something responses and some of them kind of got lost towards the end because it was a lengthy survey. But we pretty much realized that a lot of what we're seeing was more from an education perspective, not knowing some of the things that exist in the community from a police perspective, whether it's their engagement, community policing, and then some recommendations that we would like to go up to the state level, possibly the county, as they will hopefully fly. So, I'm gonna kick it over to David Baxter, who's gonna kind of lead us through the recommendations that this group put together.
Okay, and Kyle is going to join us. I think she's gonna do the recommendations part. I was going to start off with, but she's having a little technical difficulty, I believe. So, but just to give you a little bit of background on the survey, we used all the mediums that were available for the town to try to make as much of a reach as we possibly could. And I just wanna give you some examples of kind of how we sent out the surveys. Excuse me. So, the Harrisburg Town website homepage, it was on there. It was also on the customer service homepage and the community survey page. It was also on the Harrisburg Facebook page, which reaches about 7,600 people with 587 engagements. Instagram, we had 104 engagements. Twitter, 819 impressions and 11 engagements. The monthly e-newsletter, it was also mentioned in there. 2,665 subscribers for that. And then also, we had the water bills. So, and hard copies of the water bills, but the information was mailed out to over 6,000 homes and emailed to nearly 2,000. Now, the survey was available online from January the 22nd to February the 28th. There were 28 questions on the surveys and we had 512 responses. And I wanted to give you a little bit of the ethnic makeup of the respondents. 80% were white. Black, 11.35%. Hispanic, 1.79%. Asian, 2.39%. American Indian, a little under 1%. And of two races or more, 2.79%. The Harrisburg demographics, to give you an idea, the population as of July the 1st, 2019, was the population was 16,576. 64% were white. 18.8% were black or African-American. 10.6% were Asian. 4.2% of two races or more. 3.9 Hispanic or Latino. And a little under 1% American Indian. What I'm going to, we're not gonna go over the specifics because all of you guys will have that information. We'll get the specific survey with all the answers and all that. And that'd be just a little too much to go over verbatim. So, what I wanted to do is, there were several different questions, which Steve had referred to earlier, that gave us kind of an overall direction of kind of the feedback from, from the results, from the survey. Questions like, the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department develops relationships with community members. The Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office regularly communicates with community members. The Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office works together with community members to solve local problems. And do you think that Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office practices community policing? Now, of those four questions, and this is kind of generic to those four, what we got now, the survey was, you know, overall positive. But in this particular, those particular questions, which is really kind of related to what the residents in the community, their awareness of the programs and services of the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department, over 40% were positive and said, yes, you know, to all of those questions. But the thing that was revealing is between 35 and 39% said, "I'm not really sure," or "I can't agree or disagree." So, what that kind of indicated to us was kind of a lack of awareness of the survey, I mean, of different programs and the outreach that the Sheriff's Department is doing. So that was one of the reasons that we wanted to do what we were doing as far as the educational component of the recommendations that we had. And I was just checking to see if, and Kyla is logged in. Okay, and she's going to go over the recommendations that we've come up with the task force. I think you're on mute.
Hi. Okay, good evening, everybody. What I'm going to share my, oh, is it possible that I can share something on screen?
It may. We should, should be right.
Yeah, she should be able.
Yep, she can click the share button.
It's telling me host disabled participant screen sharing.
Hey, can you fix that?
One moment, she should be able to now.
Got it. Yep, thank you.
I just said, counsel, this is a slice and dice off of Survey Monkey. It's a little bit easier to read and it's by race. That was done by Lieutenant Meesmer and Amanda, who's a person.
Okay. Before I get into the actual recommendations, what I did want to show you was some of the data that we did receive. Thank you to Lieutenant Meesmer for being able to gather this information. And it's from some of the Harrisburg, North Carolina law enforcement data. And so, when we look at the population demographics that David already spoke about, you see whites at 66%, blacks at 19%, Hispanics at 4%, Asians at 8%, and then others at 3%. And so, we wanted to take a look at the actual citations, arrests, traffic stops, to see if there was gonna be any disparity reflected based on the actual population. And one of the things that I guess we kind of noted when looking at the law enforcement data is that when they make a stop, initially, there's not anything definitive by race. What you end up getting is whether or not someone is black or white. And so, those who would fall into that Hispanic category are automatically classified as white. And that's a judgment call that ends up being made by the officers, because one, it's not on our licenses, of course. And then it's, you know, of course, they're not asking what an individual's race is. So that's definitely one area where, you know, we see that it's kind of, could be misleading as to how the information comes across just because we don't have it broken out between, like I said, all of what you would call the different races. That's why the information here that's presented when we have the 2019 citations, arrests, and traffic stops are only in black and white. So, here you see a little bit of disparity here as we see it that they are larger. Well, for a black population, about 19%. They're represented about 36% of the citations in 2019. They presented 31%, which is 12% more in arrest. Also, they had a higher percentage when it came to traffic stops. Now, on the surface, of course, it could be a whole bunch of different reasons that kind of go into why these numbers are the way they are. But it's definitely eye-opening and an opportunity for you to be able to look at why the, where our population of just 19%, you know, of those of, no, those that are classified as black, that they have higher percentages when it comes to citations, the arrests, and traffic stops. We also have the opportunity to have information pulled on the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office, since of course Harrisburg does not have its own law enforcement here. And so, we just wanted to kind of take a look at the number of personnel that were hired and then their classification by race. And here, of course, you see where we put the gaps. But from a recommendation standpoint, it's not necessarily as important that you, you wanna make sure that you do have a law enforcement that is reflective of the community that is serving. But we're not saying it has to be an exact number or anything like that. You know, it was just a way of actually, again, evaluating the personnel issue from law enforcement and how that broke down between the racial demographics. Okay. Let me see. See if screen share here. Make sure. Whoops, sorry. Alright. Stop share, hold up. And I'm coming back in with a different document now. Okay. And so, here with our subgroup, there were lots of recommendations that ended up coming out of here. And so, we, there are different things, of course, at our local level. And then as we look at it from a state level, again, we, and we look at our city, we understand that, again, Harrisburg does not have its own law enforcement agency here, and it's Cabarrus County. And so, anything, if we wanna be effective about the change that we are making, that we need to be able to make those recommendations at that county level. So, when we say local here, we're talking about our Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office. So, for local level, what recommendations are is, one, to recruit and hire qualified officers that will match or exceed the racial demographics of the Harrisburg community. Like, again, I don't think it's that, is that materially off. But I know that there are a lot of different things that the, when we looked at, that's the officers, well, the sheriff's office is actually doing to recruit. And it involves some different things such as engaging, as we put it, I'm gonna skip to number four, engaging African-American churches to improve the image of law enforcement officers and firefighters in the black community. That possibly the reason why you don't have a lot of people of color going into law enforcement is because of some of the negative experiences that they may have within their own neighborhoods and communities. And so, this was just another recommendation to engage with those African-American churches to be able to improve that law enforcement image. And I will say this, when we talk about the law enforcement image, it is definitely something, one of the things that came out is the, I guess, the backlash that sometimes the black officers end up getting from their own community because they are in law enforcement. And so, it's not just a black-white thing where it's the improving the image of only white law enforcement officers, but it's improving the image of the law enforcement agencies in total. Let's see. Let me go back up to number two. It's to enhance diversity training of officers to offset the racial disparity that's seen in the citations and to reduce the possibility of profiling. Also, three, is to educate the community on what is community policing. One of the things we actually learned from working in this particular sub-team is that there's a lot that our Harrisburg, I mean, that the law enforcement officers are actually doing within the community that the greater community does not even know about. It's one of the things that David even mentioned, that people who said, "I just don't know." And that's where we need to go about making sure that our community is educated on all the different things, the great things too, that, you know, our law enforcement agencies are doing as far as their community policing. Five, to hire a public information officer, communications officer, to inform the community of improvements and achievements of the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department. Three, to improve information systems to gather better demographic and racial data that will help evaluate and improve policing. Seven, is to consider funding the Harrisburg Law Enforcement Officers to attend the two-day Cabarrus Racial Equity Water Shit Training. We also understand that a lot of these things happening at the local level, there are some recommendations that we would like to see to move further on the state level. And we have several of them listed here. It's petitioning the state of North Carolina, the Sheriff Education and Training Standards and Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission. That's a lot, to form one training and standards commission. I guess, so this would guarantee that deputy sheriffs and police officers receive equal training and that they're held to the same professional standard. Also, to petition the state of North Carolina Sheriff's Education and Training Standards and Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission to extend the basic law enforcement training, the BLET for new officers, and to include incident training, the CIT verbal conflict training, and racial sensitivity awareness. And then, the three is to petition the state of North Carolina and Sheriff Education and Training Standards for changes in current mental health transportation laws. And we still have this, this is, please ask me about this during our next meeting.
And so, I could actually, and I think, I'm not sure if Lieutenant Meesmer is on, but it's more around the training required as they arrest a, somebody that happens to be mentally impaired and use of force, the lack of use of force, to just trying to make sure they do the right thing, but they need to be educated on exactly how they would do that transportation process.
This also has to do with the fact that when a person is in some type of mental crisis, law enforcement shows up and we can provide immediate care. But with the way those transportation laws are set up, we are forced to do continuous cares for hours to sometimes even a day long. We can spend anywhere between four to six or eight hours with some of these folks. And our job does not teach us how to do that continuation of care. We, ours is just the immediate care. But the laws force us to be with those folks and we would like to see that changed. They need to be with mental health professionals, not with a law enforcement officer when they're in crisis.
And then number four, to petition the state of North Carolina to increase the training budget for certified CIT, the Critical Incident Training, and make it a mandatory class for existing officers. The current available class sizes are insufficient. So, as you can see here, a lot of what we ended up covering is not just stuff that was so targeted on race. Definitely, we were looking at some of the disparities and being able to point them out, but then also being able to look at the greater whole of some improvements that need to happen within the law enforcement agencies. I will take a moment to pause because I know when people wanna ask, you know, "How did you end up joining this subcommittee and everything and then joining the task force?" I always like to make sure that people understand that, you know, my experiences with law enforcement have been quite favorable, actually. But that's not to say that I don't understand the profiling that goes on and things like that. It's not like I don't get profiled by going in the stores. But I will say that, why ended up joining this particular sub-force is because my ex-husband, who I'm still friends with, is Caucasian and he was a Mecklenburg County Sheriff's Deputy. So, have experience in that area. And, you know, and people will ask, I mean, I still support the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. I am still active with other things where it comes to law enforcement. But it's not that I don't recognize that there are definite areas of improvement that are needed in this particular area, not only when it comes to some of the racial inequities that would end up existing within law enforcement as one of the systems where we have these disparities. But then also, it is a greater, I guess, an improvement of the whole entire system itself and not just only focusing on the racial and our demographics and making sure that we have law enforcement officers that look like a lot of people in the neighborhoods and that you're building that community policing within your neighborhoods, that individuals, especially here within Harrisburg, I'm gonna focus here. I've lived here for almost 10 years in this city, you know, feel safe, you know, being here. But then also that you're continuing to build upon some of the other critical training that's needed with dealing with mental health services and different things of that nature. So, that's all I have to say. Does anybody else have anything?
So, I'm just gonna, so I do have two commissioners online, I believe there's still two, Steve Morris as well as Blake Tiger. And obviously, the whole local section is impactful for both the county and obviously Harrisburg. So, I would hope that we can maybe dig a little bit deeper into that list with the county. I know probably one that costs a little bit of money would be the information officer, but I believe, based on what it feels like, lack of education, information getting out to residents about what's going on from that perspective, it could be beneficial for the entire county. I did speak with Lieutenant this morning. The areas at the state level apparently are being talked about. So that list of things that were listed under the state, so what I would probably recommend for us to do is monitor that and possibly send kind of a support of, or endorsing those items that were listed within the state level. So you have Harrisburg, or the county, or both of us would like to see this happen at the state level. That only makes our police force matter.
A question for you. So, in reference to the PIO, does the sheriff not have a PIO?
So, they leverage, I think, like CASHA or the groups that's already doing the information office push for all of the county, but that covers everything. So it's not very specific to what, from a police perspective, on things about community person, their outreach, about community policing, their outreach program where they're going to high schools and just having an open chat session. A lot of things that we're probably missing out on. If you look, when you get a chance to look at the survey, you'll see 50% of the people just don't know. Which is concerning, right? You know, whether we're happy, it's good or bad, but they don't know. And the other 50% or so is good, right? We're doing pretty good. So we need to get the other half. Most of them would have to think their next grade.
The other question I had was with reference to the enhanced first training, has there been a look inside to understand what training they're getting today versus what?
So, yeah, Lieutenant Meesmer took both classes, but I don't know that it was offered. Lieutenant, if you wanna speak to that, the two-day class is a little more intense than the half-day class that I think all of us, most of us took this on the committee. Lieutenant, how was that offered to you guys? I think you said you took the two-day class.
I attempted to take the two-day class. It was canceled and they have not scheduled any further ones for us to be able to sign up for. But the agency was looking into trying to have Rowan Cabarrus provide that training and also seeing if there was a way they could do a one-day version instead of a two-day so we could send the entire 400-person force to that training over a period of weeks.
So that was like item five or six or something? I was asking about item two, the enhanced diversity training.
So, can you pull up your slide again, just so we can all be looking at Kyle?
Because I was curious, I mean, I'm thinking they would probably be going through some type of diversity training.
Yeah, I agree, dude. I'll let Lieutenant speak to that as well.
It's diversity training of officers.
Number two.
I was just curious if there was a comparison to where they are today versus where this committee would like to see them.
Got it. Lieutenant, can you speak?
Yes, sir. I did not bring the list of everything officers are trained each year, but we are required to do sensitivity, juvenile sensitivity along with ethnic sensitivity in a four-hour class every single year. That's a requirement the state has had for years. There's a whole gambit. It was an entire list of classes the deputies can attend if they choose to and in some cases need to attend. But I did not bring that list with me today. It's classes offered by all the community colleges that surround this county that they're able to take.
Any other questions from counsel or staff?
So, when you looked at the data, Mayor, at what point are you able to identify, if someone is stopped, does it immediately go through a license check or any type of check that allows you to look at their race? Does it go through to look to say classification of age? Does it look to say at all if they're actually from outside of Harrisburg in one of the surrounding towns?
I'm gonna let Lieutenant jump on that, but I think you're you're gonna hit on a spot where it's subject to the person that pulled that person and making a judgment call based on how they look. Obviously, some may be more obvious than others, but there's a lot of gray area in there that you just don't know. Lieutenant, can you speak to that? Because I'm seeing that.
I can't. Start with every traffic stop that's made. The officer has to fill out a racial profiling form at the end of that traffic stop. So if the blue lights come on regardless of what action they took on that stop, they must complete that form which is submitted to the state of North Carolina. And that mentions things along the lines such as what the person's race were, were their use of force, was there some type of search or arrest made? How how it pertained to the passengers in the car, et cetera, as a checks and balance to make sure officers are kept accountable. With the race, there is no way under in North Carolina for us to know what a person's race is. And I gave the example, I had to open my home to a child in need for about a year. He looks Caucasian with red hair, but technically by law, he is Asian because he's Syrian. So to pull him over, he doesn't have an accent, immediately people would say he's a Caucasian, he's a white male. But in reality, he would be an Asian male based upon that, and those type mistakes happen. So of course, we don't ask what a person's race is, that's the last thing law enforcement would ever want to do or care about really on a traffic stop. So most officers will leave that blank. They don't ask, they don't want to know, they're pulling over for whatever, they're pulling them over for whatever the law enforcement offense is, not based on their their race. And then as you pertain to age, we will know the person's age, that is still on the license, North Carolina license, but the race is not. I know you asked a couple of questions all in one, did that answer all of them or did I miss?
It did, Lieutenant, thank you. I mean, does the age give us any any difference in anything? Does the age?
We don't, our current systems do not track if the officers have, if a particular officer, let's say me, for example. If I pull over 15 people, it will not track whether or not the majority of the ones I gave ticket to were all over 40 or if they were 16 to 22, I gave verbal warnings. Most of the systems aren't that complicated, it'd be up for us to be able to pull that data.
So and I guess I'm just getting at past the question. Has already been stated, the the college town, the university being six blocks away. And I know this is a close travel for them, so trying to understand if there's any correlation between. Age of of youth and their 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 careheartedness of free of maybe speeding a little too fast.
But when we took the survey, we do have age listed in there, but this, what I just sent you was broken by race and not necessarily by age. We can probably go back and and just show you at least how answers are being dropped based on that age. If you track Harrisburg demographically, our ages are probably higher than 30s to 60, 70 rate than anything on the underside anyway. Just from who would be completing this, so we can look.
He hit a good, he hit a very good point with us being a transit hub, we're pretty much, everybody's heading into Charlotte during the day and leaving at night. What our diversity is during at night is not what it is during the day when folks are going through our county heading over to Charlotte. That changes and there's no way for us to actually track that.
Just to state on the survey, the majority, 30% of the people that took the survey were 30 to 45 years old. 25% were 48 to 55 years old, so that was your biggest part of the people that participated in the survey. People from ages 18 to 25, less than 3%, and 26 to 35, it was about 11%.
And can you give me those first two categories again, please, David?
Sure.
I'll get you guys the raw survey monkey, and this is what you just got, which is broken by race, I'll give you the actual.
Thank you.
Hey Mayor, Councilman Selberg, are, how many representatives of law enforcement do we actually have on the committee at this particular time?
We have Lieutenant Meesmer and Amanda, what is Amanda's role? I know she's our data person, but is she an actual officer?
All right, I'm just curious because maybe those representatives may be able to filter some of this prior to being put in front of us.
So it was, so what you're seeing, what I just sent you was a lot of great work by Amanda who took the data that is not so pretty in Survey Monkey. And and ran it through a series of pivot tables to produce what you're seeing. Which was at the recommendation of the committee themselves to actually slice it by race and then the answers to those questions. So yeah, it's gone through several iterations of work, a lot of great work. I can't thank Amanda enough for what she did because it was very manual for her to dissect the raw data out of Survey Monkey. Wasn't as nice as it could have been.
And all of the law enforcement, the gap report data that was presented, all of that was received. From Lieutenant Meesmer and thank you to Amanda, who ended up pulling all that information. It's not as if we got that that information came from them that they were able to provide to the subcommittee.
The Sheriff's Department has been extremely helpful in all of this, especially Lieutenant Meesmer and Amanda.
So was there any aha moments in all of this?
So that we went into this kind of, at least from a healthcare perspective, thinking that if our only opportunity would be probably education. And I think that's what we're seeing predominantly, is people just need to know what they don't know and have ability to to record or go to someplace on our site where there's ours or county saying. Here's the great things that they're doing, they're not, they're not patting themselves on the back enough to show the community what they're doing. That's kind of, I think, at least when I looked at it, that's what I got to do, 50% of people not knowing an answer or have no idea, which tells me they just, there's not enough information to give out for that. And you guys on the phone, correct me? For sure. Hey, there, Kyla.
Yeah, I think that.
Sorry, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, I I think what kind of came out is that with the recommendations and what we found through the surveys and the information that the Sheriff's Department's provided. Is that, you know, I think we're very fortunate here that our solutions are looking at education and communications. And I think that that's a great place to be, and I think that's something that we can do that will create an impact. It's not going to solve everything for sure, but it will, it will be a great way to get started and moving forward. Addressing this, so I I think that, you know, and I, and it's all very doable. I think it is very, it's affordable, it's not an outrageous amount of monies, and I think that everybody will be better for it.
What you'll see in the survey, we did get some folks that took it that weren't part of 28075, and we tried to filter those out. So it's pretty much 28075 in perspective, but obviously we look different Concord, if we look in Canaveral, so we look in Midland, Mount Pleasant. But what you're seeing is is predominantly not 99% Harrisburg or 28075.
So my my last question then, tell you about that is. Do we, and I don't know if we have an answer yet, do we see that community policing is better understood? A more urban environment versus a rural, I mean, because, you know, when I look at Harrisburg, when I look at Com or Cabarrus County, as spread out as it is. You know, I, while I see an officer travel through a neighborhood, you know, a day or two or whatever. I don't know that I get an opportunity to speak to them that often, right? Maybe in an urban situation, I would see them on foot, whatever.
Yeah, I would, I agree, I mean, I'm I'm right there with you, we're all, we're kind of all like, please, Lisa, what's that? And I think everybody else thought the same when they took the survey, so definitely an educated officer. And you're right, and I, you know, like I'm going to win every day, I say card in my at least once a day, I don't stop to say, hey, I'm going back. Any other questions? I want to thank the subcommittee, Pastor Watkins, ladies, I'm not able to be here speaking with his mom in Georgia, I believe, and David and Kyla. Great group to work with, subcommittee did a lot of great stuff, we've got more stuff to come, we'll talk about that tomorrow, my comments section. But thank you very much for joining us, and we're, and we're, and we're doing some good stuff here, you guys did a great job. And Lieutenant Meesmer and Amanda as well. No other questions, we'll move on, thank you guys, you guys can definitely drop. We're going to move to public comments, anyone wishing to address council, may need to join public comment, please state your name and address for the record. Be courteous, do not repeat what's already been said, please keep your comments about the subject and not personal in nature. So what we'll do is we'll go to the chat window, if you want to raise your hand through chat, if you're on the phone. You can acknowledge by just speaking up, we'll go to the chat first, we have any emails that came in from anywhere? So if you guys can help me release the chat window. You want to raise your hand in chat, if you don't, you can speak up, or we really do, if you're online, able to hit the chat, we can unmute you.
Make sure also to note that there'll be opportunities for some items later.
We do have some public hearings today, you'll have another opportunity specific to the public hearing to speak during that time period. This is just for anything you want to address council with, anything that's on your mind that you want us to know about or ask any questions that Mayor may not be able to answer, but we can certainly get your name and address.
There's one person that has their hand raised.
Melanie Freeman.
James, can you unmute Melanie Freeman and Melanie, at your pleasure, you can speak.
She's been given permission to talk.
Ms. Freeman? You can unmute yourself. She's still on mute. Sure you unmuted her, James?
Mr. Mayor, that hand has been raised since the meeting began, so I don't know that it was specific to this segment.
We will, anybody else raise your hand through the chat window, if you're on the phone and not in Zoom, you can speak up if you'd like. And if you want to speak during the public comment about the development coming up, that'll be an opportunity there as well. All right, here none, we will move forward. We'll go to Dr. Consulate, gentlemen. Just as we got motion on the floor.
Second.
Properly seconded, all in favor say aye, Councilman Rod, Councilman John, Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian. Councilman Red.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Aye.
Councilman Andrew Ford.
Right, Mayor and Council, a few just updates for items related to public meetings over the next couple of weeks. Three particularly that are coming up that we want to make the public aware of. Our next one is related to the Unified Development Ordinance update. This has been an ongoing update for us and our planning and zoning department. They actually have a public meeting scheduled for April 14th of this week. We're actually doing two different times, 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Advanced registration is needed for those meetings, but we just wanted to make that announcement so that. Anybody interested in being a part of that update process can go onto our website or reach out to our planning and zoning department to to register for that. We also with the town council have two remaining budget workshops. We are nearing the completion of our FY 22 budget. And our next workshop is on April 22nd at 6:00 PM here in town council chambers. And our last scheduled workshop is scheduled for April 28th at 6:00 PM. So those will again be the wrap up budget discussions as we prepare the manager's recommended budget to be presented during our May council meeting. And finally, we have a community chat, which is a new program that we've just kicked back up over the last couple of months. That is scheduled for April 29th at 6:00 PM. The topics for that meeting have yet to be determined at this point, but we'll get that information out. Over the coming weeks to to give guidelines for what will be discussed during that. But it's it's really a great opportunity for members of the public and business owners to connect with staff and council members. And just have general conversations about things going on in town that you may not otherwise be able to during a formal meeting like a council meeting. So those are three very important meetings that we have coming up and again encourage our public to attend each of those. Also want to address the Stallings Road improvements that were recently completed at the end of March by N C D O T. We've had actually a couple of people ask, residents ask about what is expected to continue with that project. And if anyone's driven Stallings Road lately, they'll know that there has been some patchwork and repair work done to that street. But that patchwork is not necessarily up to par to what the final result will be. And the reason for that is that N C D O T does plan to pave Stallings Road at some point during this year, so that's good news. So long story short, they made it worse before it gets better, I guess is an easy way to to put that. But know that further improvements will be coming to that road in the near future. I also want to take an opportunity, not necessarily to get direction from council in this meeting tonight. But to put it on your radar as we have upcoming programs in Harrisburg Park as we did the soft opening for that. Just a couple of weeks ago, attendance in that park has been fantastic, and so we're excited that the community is out there using it. But as our programs such as Rockin' the Bird begin, staff wants direction from council related to the mask mandate. So if you remember back early in COVID, back in 2020. The town council adopted a mandate that all participants at the park are required to wear a mask. And so as we move closer to Rockin' the Bird and other programs, we just want to have conversations with the council. About whether or not they wish to relax that mask mandate or keep it into effect as we move forward. The reason I bring it up tonight is that we will actually have our next Rockin' the Bird, or our very first, excuse me, Rockin' the Bird concert series out of Harrisburg Park on May 8th. Which is prior to our next council meeting. So I'll introduce the conversation tonight, if you guys have any questions or discussion, we'd be glad to take that as well as our Parks and Recreation staff. But and it's, it could as very well be something that we get clarity from council on at our next budget workshop or a future budget workshop. But will be something that we will want to have conversations with you about prior to that May 8th date. So just pitching that out there as a conversation point, if there's any information that you'd like for us to get, please be sure to let us know. But I'll, I'll keep it at that right now unless there are any questions or comments.
A CDC updated guidance in that space.
That's a good point, we, I do need to check that because it is sort of updating on a daily basis. So we can get that information and share that with council to to help you guide you in your decision. And with that being said, we, before I turn it over to our finance director for our finance report and Lieutenant Meesmer for our law enforcement report. I have asked our IT director, James Mahoney, to just provide the public and the council with a high level overview. Of a recent malware attack that took place on the town's IT system. So James, if you don't mind, just providing that real high level update for the community about what happened and when and and our steps forward.
Thank you, Haynes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, we've had two malware infections in the last weeks of March. One occurring on March 19th and one occurring on March 26th. The infection was highly invasive and disabled network communications across the board. Essentially, it was able to spread itself to roughly 20 workstations and 10 server systems. They, that's what was initially infected in in the second attack, and the first attack was isolated to just a single server. So all, all systems that were affected were essentially. Either running Windows 7, had been upgraded from Windows 7, or were running Windows Server 2012. Which is based on the short-lived Windows 8 operating system. Some plans had been in place to begin migrating to the 2019 server system and believe that this attack would not have been nearly. As as total. Had 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 that been in place. Due to the extended attack, the town's tertiary response plan regarding physical server hardware loss had to be implemented. Our first two are based on replica, the use of replicas, which are very quick restores. This was held up mostly due to Active Directory and the Exchange Server. That were not able to be restored from the replica manner. that were not able to be restored from the replica manner. See, so that along with the requirement to isolate the entire system and and scan and just determine what had been infected, that the amount of time that took greatly delayed the resource restore process. And beyond that, the restore and the process of rebuilding the network piece by piece faced several hurdles ranging from reinfections, infected email backups. And just to put it things in perspective, eat, some of these backups took about six hours to 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 complete and had been, a few of them had to be done several times. Other issues that we saw were server storage connectivity issues throughout the restore process and just the amount, sheer amount of data that needed to be moved around, moved around in order to make space for the backups. So plans, as I mentioned, plans were in place to upgrade to a more secure operating system and and migrate the data. We just hadn't hadn't gotten there yet. And as as far as the actual attack, the only thing we've seen evidence of thus far is the actual malware, which really just hijacked our system resources and broke our network connections. Beyond that, the nature of the attack led, leads us to the possibility that that other systems may have been looked at, so we're recommending that we bring in a third-party forensics team to to look at at the exact time and see if they're able to pinpoint any data that might have been breached beyond that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
James, have we done any research, Councilman Selberg here, on the the cost that it will take to bring in the third-party to do this, or is it a a open checkbook, may I say?
At this point, I do not have an estimate, I'll tell you what. With the help of that technician, Diego Martinez and Chief Wooton's help, we were still kind of dealing with the aftermath of getting folks reconnected to an entirely rebuilt network, essentially, we're ironing out the final few pieces. And I do not have a number on something of that nature. What I'm recommending is that we purchase another server and adequate storage to move the infected systems to, which would allow us to basically do an offline, that would give us the environment that would facilitate the review.
Look forward to your recommendations and and that written documents to what you plan to do going forward.
So we've isolated, we know the root cause is a virus, you know how it got in, and then going kind of to Troy's point, obviously it took quite a lot of time to recover. And clearly we now need to put a new process in place to be able to prevent that duration again. So what obviously, what are the controls we're going to put in place to prevent the next time this could happen? Are we going to have some some third parties test us frequently? To see if we have some vulnerabilities that can be identified and remediated before we have a problem? Those are the kind of things I would be looking for from my perspective, make sure that we don't fall back into this again, and the duration is off the charts, clearly. I know I work for a bank, if we were down this long, we, well, they probably shut us down, can't be down this long. So just, you know, there's a lot of work that now needs to happen with with the root cause analysis and future mitigation controls being put in place, so we don't fall back into this again.
Understood. It, we've been working with Caddis Technology Group out of Charlotte during this, during this process. Essentially, this particular, what I believe to be the the entry point has been a hole in our network since the day it was implemented. And unfortunately, you're right, with 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 Microsoft, you know, just operating in the manner that it does, there there could be other holes there out there that just haven't been discovered yet. My understanding is this particular one took place in, well, it was discovered back in January and was made public around March second. Some steps were taken to protect us at that time that did not, did not complete the task, so. For that, I I, that was an oversight on my part that that allowed this to take to take place, so. Yes, we certainly will work to, I think, the easy, the easiest thing that I would do would would involve the replication environment. And instead of having the data backup every, you know, five to ten to fifteen minutes, perhaps having it replicate every day, she's a larger amount of data. And that that would give us the ability to restore the replicas in in a manner, matter of hours. We're talking, you know, perhaps, you know, I would say probably fifteen to twenty-four hours, which is what I believe that would take.
Lose a day's worth of data, right?
Well, yes, but then 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 the next step after that would be, and we're in this boat to to a small degree, just to the nature of the Exchange Server situation, is from that point, we could restore the the rest of the data from backup, but it would get the system back up and running immediately. You know, that that that's what I would, that would be my plan, and unfortunately, just the nature of the configuration, you know, in the instantaneous replicating, because the idea was, yes, to be operating at full, full mast, which from a virus infection, that that was not an effective strategy.
Replicating virus, right?
Hey, James, Councilman Selberg again, please don't take my comments despairingly, given what's happened with the cog in the different nine counties around the community. Harrisburg is positioned very well, not just with yourself, but the staff you have and also with the fire department helping and jumping in there, we are better prepared as Harrisburg than most communities around the area of our size. So great job of what you've done, I just look forward to continuous improvement and good job.
I appreciate that, Councilman Selberg. Yeah, I'll tell you, in nineteen years, I've never had a server-side virus infection in doing this, so this is was an eye-opener, and I do intend to take every step possible to plan beyond, you know, the the measures I've already taken.
James, Councilman Smith here. So in your findings, as you move forward, does it not bode the opportunity to look externally and see how much we would be looking at? Have those servers supported and covered by a company that would? And I'm not discrediting your abilities, I'm saying cyber threat experts are learning every day, the cyber threats are growing at a tremendous number and they're changing. Lemon Duck in itself, from August last year, is not the same lemon duck that attacked in February.
Precisely.
So what you saw in August was very different. And and it's hard to stay up on that, so the question back to you is, one, should we look at moving the individual users maybe to a virtual environment? And then two, a service to take over our servers and manage those, so they have the threat experts on staff that can pay the money for it as opposed to?
Yes, I I considered quite a few things in, when I've had time the past, the past two weeks. Things involving migrating our email to Office three sixty-five as a potential. Working with Caddis Technology on a service-level agreement, they are a managed services provider that's very experienced and they they were able to loan me their top engineer over the Easter weekend to to see this thing through to the end, and that that was, I found that that was essential to 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 completing this task, you know, even in an untimely manner. But yes, I I certainly will put some of those, I mean, obviously, we're we're talking a complete and utter change in in the budget nature. But I I do see, you know, the the town's focus has really become on growth and expansion and adding new systems. And and yes, having having some of that backup that in getting someone other than myself much more familiar with the network is is certainly a desirable something to implement.
I say that there's an open checkbook, but when you think about that, the stories come out as soon as something goes wrong, so if we could get ahead of it and we look at the dollars that are needed, I would be on board if it meant that it would put us in a safer position. Thank you.
I I I agree, I agree. You know, from what I found out during this process is, you know, virus attacks have gone up somewhere around four hundred percent. And it's not just average hacker groups anymore, it's coordinated government attacks, you know, to to some degree that are that are that are happening, so. There there's a lot to consider to to separate our data and and make it less a one point of 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 attack.
Hey, James, Councilman Russo here. Get a price on, see what it would cost, have somebody on retainer, but there's no open checkbook with my last name. Why do we need to get price? Get a price so we have somebody a retainer, I'm fine with that, bring it to us, but, you know, the open checkbook thing doesn't go with me.
Yes, in the in the coming days, I will kind of gather the the, our available avenues and and find it and get a couple of different quotes on on service-level agreements to to have someone, you know, a little bit ready. You know, just a lack of hands there in the beginning really, really slowed this down. And we brought on J S C M Group on Monday and then Caddis Technology on Thursday of that last week. And in more hands, that certainly would have would have expedited that. Yeah, I I reached out to about four different I T professionals, Guardian Technology, William Ice Consulting, folks that I've worked with for, you know, I've known for eighteen years. And some of them said, you know, we're on a thirty-day backup, we've we've dealt with seven of these attacks in the last, you know, in the last month. And and they, he's like, we just hired another guy and we're thirty days out before we can, you know, schedule a new project, so. It's a, it's, it was very, very difficult to to find ready hands, so it would, we definitely need to look at having someone, you know, already kind of at the ready.
So James, this is Councilman Dillinger, please, whatever we said, we're just trying to help, I think that you've got three I T guys that have worked here, the mayor, Ron, and myself, and we've been involved in disaster recoveries over the year, over the years, and it is a big task and especially for one and one-half person. And I know that it's going to take a time to get to the next step. I know personally at home, even though I may use one to defend or some, I have another product, Bit Defender, or Avast, or Norton, or MacaBee. Would that be a quick answer, quick fix to get installed on all our stuff?
That actually, that actually Bit Defender is is what we use to protect our environment during the restore process. So that that was part of every server restore, there were a handful of configuration changes that needed to take place from distributed track, transaction coordinator reinstalls to, you know, network trust, domain trust issues. But also, we we put on Bit Defender using Caddis Technology System that essentially we created a domain power group policy, so any computer that's domain that's installed, installs the agent, and then it's remote remotely monitorable. In my opinion, and for what I've seen, Microsoft seems to be, and even Caddis had had mentioned this, that they they kind of seem to be at the forefront of of that, but the centralized management aspect is leaves a little bit to be desired. But yes, to answer your question, I didn't mean to cut you off, Bit Defender is is what we we've gone with.
So, but, so it's going to be on the server and it will not be on our local Surface or local Apple products or our local phones to to catch anything?
At this point, it it is configured to be installed on every workstation. As as they're joined, so it's something we are, you know, checking in on and and making sure goes on, but it currently is on all our servers. From my, from what I saw, the servers were essentially the only things that are on the network now that that would require it. But we will have to kind of weigh the pros and cons of of the built-in Microsoft solution versus a a specialized security company.
Okay, and let me move to one other thing, so we're a hundred percent sure that we didn't lose any emails during this time?
It's this current status of your mailbox is going to tell you differently. Essentially, the database itself was restored to a point in time from the eighteenth, just to the the backups were corrupted by the virus, some some permission changes that took place didn't allow for logs to clear, I don't know if you're familiar with exchange backups, but that that kind of made some of the backups from that final week before the attack unusable, so, but we do have the ability to access the initial database and export P S T files and reclaim that data. That is a lengthy process for which we will, we, it it, that that the restore environment that I had mentioned would certainly assist in bringing out an extra set of hands to focus on that task would be recommended.
James, answer the question yes or no. Answer the, answer Councilman Dillinger's question yes or no. Are we confident that we have received all emails during the period of time our systems were down?
My my answer to that question is yes, anything that was sent during the outage, we have received.
Thank you, sir.
But I, but to there there's a seventy-two-hour holder, placeholder before it sends an undeliverable receipt, so anything that it did not send in under deliverable receipt has has since been delivered.
And when we get those, we would get it on the latest day, it would show up in the day of the latest day that it got sent, not the original day?
I I believe the date you actually received it in your inbox is is the way I saw that, so yes, Monday morning around ten A M. Was the was the date of the first message I received, and I believe that was sent pre, prior to the, prior to the attack. Or I mean, prior to to the restore.
Okay, and my last question, and I know as residents and as myself, they want to be sure that their data was not breached. Any, 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 any things that you would like to share with the residents on that?
The nature of the attack would lead to the ability to access our data. Whether or not that took place, we haven't seen any evidence yet, that does not say that that did not happen. That's why I'm recommending a third-party investigation to look and see if if they're able to, you know, find out what what took place.
All right, thank you, James.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for James? I'm sure he's going to be giving us lots more data coming back as they dig deeper.
All right, James, thank you so much for that update, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Finance Director Brian Lee to give a finance update, and we'll follow his presentation with an update from Lieutenant Meesmer.
All right, thank you, Haines, good evening, Mayor and Council. I've got your finance report for the month of March, three-quarter mark through the fiscal year. So here's our revenue and expense dashboard for the month. General fund revenues are at ninety-two percent at the seventy-five percent mark, so that is great. That's really most heavily impacted by our tax collections at about a hundred and two percent of our budget. Of course, that budget was depressed from our anticipated collection problems that may arise with COVID, but we're lucky that we're not seeing that happen with our property taxes. The Stormwater Fund is right on target at seventy-five percent, and the Water and Sewer Fund has slipped back to sixty-nine percent, which is six percent behind right now. A little over one percent of that overall budget is due to our suspension of credit card fees and late fees and account delinquency fees. So we are probably going to show up one to two percent short on our total revenues for the year. But the other portion that we're, that we've fallen behind on is just the winter months, usages is down. So heading into the spring and the summer, we'll see that revenue start to pick back up. But we will probably not reach a hundred percent, just based on the suspension of some of our revenues in that fund. Our departmental expenditures are all looking great, this is the last month, that council will be in the red, probably in the yellow next month, but that, of course, is due to the CARES Act funding that was, that was spent there, a hundred and forty-seven thousand this year. All other general government departments and administration look great in the forties, fifties, and sixties at this point in the year. The rest of our departments in the general fund all look great as well, same forties, fifties, and sixties at this point in the year. Salaries town-wide at sixty-eight percent, so that number's looking good there. I do want to point out that the water and sewer operations are behind by about twelve percent, and the revenue is only behind by about six percent, so even if we didn't pick up or improve anywhere in the last quarter, we still or improve anywhere in the last quarter, we still have set ourselves up with our spending pullback to be able to absorb that pullback in revenue as well. So that's encouraging sign in there. And we'll move into our project dashboard. Our single year projects have a bit of activity this month. The Back Creek Greenway has a little motion there. Jim's got caught up gotten caught up to speed on that project. I know he's walked a couple of neighborhoods, a couple of connection points, and has met with the, him and the engineering department have met with some other property owners, the school, a church that's interested in helping. So the ball is starting to move on that and starting to coordinate with developments as well. So we're seeing progress on getting an alignment determined for that Back Creek Greenway. The Holkenwood Soccer Fields and the related branded facility sign. The construction for Holkenwoods is at about 60%. So the overall project's at about 50% now. And the branded facility sign still needs an official name. That park needs an official name. But once that's decided, manufacturing can carry on with that sign. And then the annual sanitary sewer rehab. That contract with Bradford Park is on the council agenda tonight. So you hear more from Rob on that one. At the very bottom of this list is Hickory Ridge Waterline Extension. And what this is, or what this was, was a swap of us carrying some of those waterline costs to get out to Hickory Ridge Elementary in return for some traffic improvements. They did not complete those traffic improvements for us. So our contribution towards their water line was canceled out. So you'll see that that project is now just not required. It is done and no cost to the town on that. Future development out there should help bring those traffic improvements that we were looking for at a later time. Our multi-year projects in design, not much to discuss here, other than the Caldwell Road sidewalks have left design and have entered the construction phase, as we'll see later on tonight as well, with a contract for that sidewalk project. Our projects in construction, Harrisburg Parks at 98%. We did have that soft opening at the end of the month. It went really well and the park looks fantastic. Some finishing touches going on out there. But everything's looking great and we're going to be able to have our programs underway. The elevated water storage tanks at about 95%. So a lot of the pipe work has been finished there. It's being filled and sanitized. The only thing that that it needs is some of the computer equipment. And then they will go over to Tower One and paint and label that. Britley Number Two Pump Decommissioning is finishing up. You see it's at 99%. They've got a little bit of drive work and yard work to do, driveway and yard work to do, but that one is very close to being finished. The Morehead West Sewer Phase One Project, that construction contract should be on the agenda next month. We have bids coming back on April 15th for that project. And that one's also included in our transportation bonds as the biggest project in the water and sewer debt issuance that we'll be doing here soon. Stormwater System A Phase Two is also moving along to about 95%. That one is in a similar position to Britley where it's got some driveways and some fine grading and seeding going on in people's yards, but that one is substantially complete as well. Francis Haven and Farmington Pump Station Decommissioning was also completely finished in March. So you'll see that, I know Rob's happy about this, but he's got a number of projects that are coming off his plate that were in construction all simultaneously. So between the park, the water tower, a couple pump station decommissionings, some water lines and storm water. He's got a lot of projects finishing up here in the last quarter of the year or in about this this month that we're in. So a lot of good work there coming from his department. Our equipment projects mostly finished for the year. As you see, the battery extraction tools for the fire department have moved down to complete. The Kubota replacement has been received. It has a couple more accessories to get on and then it will be placed in service. And the Camstruck Collector Set is on top, it was installed on top of the water tower. It just needs power run to it and then a SIM card so it can communicate and it'll be online as well. Vehicle projects, these haven't moved too much. We did get one of the Public Works Crew Trucks in and a water sewer truck in. But the others are somewhere in the specking or ordering status, and we still have one that we haven't located yet. Our professional services projects, the ADA Plan Assessment is at 98%. It's almost done. So we'll have some of the recommendations coming out of that study in the new fiscal year. And then the Highway 49 Corridor Plan and UDO Update are at about 80%. And Haines touched on some of the upcoming meetings for the UDO. And the Highway 49 Corridor Plan, sorry, turn page just here. Staff is working on a draft document that should be presented to council in the May or June meeting. So be looking for that coming up soon. Here is our remaining budget schedule again. I know Haines already touched on this, but Thursday, the 22nd, and April 28th will be our last two remaining budget meetings. And the only other thing I have is that, just to just to keep everyone updated, the old fire station number two sale did close in March, and so the towns received those proceeds and that transaction's closed out. So everything went smoothly there. And I have to say thank you to Rich for getting everything worked out there and closing that out for us. And that is all I have for tonight. Welcome any questions.
All right, thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Lieutenant Meesmer, are you ready to give a law enforcement update?
Yes, sir. In the month of March, the Sheriff's Office responded to 2,160 total calls for service. They conducted 342 traffic stops, 1,677 security checks, and had an average response time, non emergency response time of 6.29 seconds. What we did see in the month of March is a decrease in breaking enters, larcenies, larcenies from motor vehicles and identity thefts. We did see a slight uptick on vandalism. It was four cars that were damaged out near the Mecklenburg County line, but they were all damaged at the same time. It wasn't but one incident. And we also did have one armed robbery that was at the CVS in late hours. That is still under investigation. I welcome any questions you guys may have.
Questions?
Yeah, I got one. Lieutenant Meesmer, how many deputies do you have serving in Harrisburg?
17 total.
17, okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving along. Sustainability Advisory Board got a lot of things going on. And specifically, we're doing a tree giveaway. There's some saplings that'll be sent to us from a Charlotte Tree Program on Saturday the 17th. So residents can actually sign up to get a tree or to do some volunteer work. And I'll go through that here in a second, but online you'll see a sign on Genius on our town website where you can get actually a free sapling. Now, this is a sapling. There's not a pot. It's some roots in a bag and it's a little tiny tree, but it is a tree. Hopefully in the fall, we'll actually do some six footers from Arbor Day Foundation. We need volunteers for several projects. We got a cleanup on Rocky River Road at 9:30 a.m. to noon. So we'll be picking up waste and recyclables. We'll be supplying bags, gloves, desk, and grabbers at Harrisburg. You can pick those up at Harrisburg Park. The tree seedling, there'll be some plantings going on in Farmville Park of some of those seedlings that we're getting from the Charlotte program. And then there'll be some storm drain education cards that we'll be putting in some of the neighborhoods. So lots of good things coming out of our Sustainability Advisory Board. Look forward to that. Millbrook, Millbrook has got potholes on it. This is a situation where there's a contest between NCDOT and the town of Harrisburg on who owns the road. DOT probably did it last. We owned part of the road and have took ownership of it. I got a couple money sellers today. This is the second time in probably four months. Mallory's been looking at it. Nothing has happened. Potholes are getting bigger. Obviously, there's heavy trucks. This is concrete places over there. So it's not getting any better. It's still not getting fixed. It's between us and DOT. I think after, our site says after DOT fixes it, we'll take ownership of it. But we're not getting fixed. Some of the holes are still there. That's about vehicles, all that good stuff. We could take a look at that. Rachel Equity Board, our next survey just launched today, actually. It's the health survey, a lot fewer questions than the police survey. I think it's less than actual 10 questions that are tied to the survey in addition to the demographic information. So encourage you to participate in that. That's pushed out. And with that, I will turn it over to Council if they have any comments.
Haines, I have two quick ones. Somebody wanted to know an update on the train station, literally what's going on. I know we're waiting for, they had a project lead or something that left. And then I don't think that we mentioned on the water and customer service, there's no fee or shut offs this month because of the email service. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So two very good points. So a quick update on the train station is North Carolina Railroad is the responsible party for constructing that. So the town does not control the design or construction progress of that. We have input and we're at the table there with them, but it's ultimately a North Carolina Railroad project that we will then take ownership of at completion. So Clearscapes is the architect that they have used to design it. They did have a couple of their staff members leave in December, late December. And they have transitioned a new team onto that project. And so staff has been meeting with the new architects involved, and we're very close to a final design with that project that the NCRR does hope to bid out. They are also, they being North Carolina Railroad, is also working with Norfolk Southern to gain that track access that is needed for the Amtrak train to stop at that Harrisburg station. They are fully confident that they will be able to secure that. But Norfolk Southern's attentions have been placed on other rail projects in North Carolina. And so we're sort of at the bottom of their priority list right now. But North Carolina Railroad and Norfolk Southern are working together to to ensure that partnership. So that's a status of where it's at now. It has been somewhat of a delayed design process. But we've been assured by North Carolina Railroad that they're committed to it and it's a top priority for them. And so we look forward to completing that design. So as far as the cutoffs for the month of March, you are correct. Due to our system outage that we had in late March, we decided to forego any disconnects or fees or penalties for any accounts associated with water and sewer because of the inability for some users to either make payment or reach us on those days that our customer service department was down. So for the month of March, that has been waived for all users.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for for bringing that up. Apologize. We did not make that announcement.
Heather, comments from council?
Yeah, Mayor, so this month is Celebrate Diversity Month. The Harrisburg Multicultural Festival Team is doing a month long celebration and trying to circle back to community service. So there are several things online, starting April 1st through April 22nd. Anyone can drop off any non perishable items, any hygiene items to several different community locations to help support that effort. In addition to that, and I'm not sure if we wanted to discuss this as well, Mayor, but the Khabir's Health Alliance did reach out earlier today and wanted to start a discussion about Asian hate and trying to really figure out how we can help support members in our Southeast Asian community and Asian communities regarding that.
Yep, and they'll, we'll do probably work jointly together if we put something out with the Khabir's Health Alliance as well. We'll order come on that.
Haines, I've got a question, and you may have the answer, you may not. If you don't, that's fine. I know at one point we had talked about starting, or you're part of the meeting with what we left off with last month and then statuses of those things. Do we have that tonight or not?
Yes, I do that at the action items at the very end of the meeting. So what I will do is I'll review the items from last month, but I'll also make sure that I document any new ones from tonight's meeting.
Mayor and Council, Councilman Selberg, want to give you a quick update on Central Lina Regional Council of Government. We're looking very forward to presenting, not to this municipality, but to the municipalities in some nine counties, our findings, hopefully in late April, on the on the growth that has happened since 2012 throughout the region and how it's affected those nine counties. And more importantly for this government body, how it's affected Harrisburg.
Have you else, anything else from council? We'll move to the public hearing that's the docket.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The public hearing in front of you tonight is to consider an open public hearing for Orchid Riz subdivision. The public hearing is for rezoning, conditional rezoning, zoning map amendment, and annexation of those properties in question. You may have noticed a slight change in how we've done the agenda this time around. We used to have rezoning public hearing and annexation public hearing as two different items on the agenda. There was a recent change at the state level on how we hold these hearings. And after discussing with our legal counsel, we have now combined these two acts. If there is a rezoning and if annexation is required, those will be one public hearing. And subsequently, at the next following meeting, it will be one axon item. So just wanted to preview that early on so there's no confusion why we are doing this. It is driven by the state regulations. Moving forward with the rezoning in hand, so the request in front of you to hold the public hearing is for rezoning of seven parcels that are listed on the screen. I'm not going to read all the PIN numbers, but the total acreage in question is approximately 352 acres. The goal here from the applicant is to subdivide and build 459 single family homes. And there are two different lot sizes. 227 of those are to be 60 feet wide lots and 232 of the remainder are 70 feet wide lots. As I mentioned earlier, the property as it sits today is in the county and will need to be annexed along with rezoning to the Harrisburg zoning classification. The current zoning of the property is CR, Country Residential, which is a county designation. And if approved, it will be Conditional RL, Conditional Residential Low Density. And this subdivision is also designed with conservation principles in mind, which simply translates to preservation of existing open split, excuse me, existing open space to the greatest extent possible. Minimum required for those kind of subdivision is preservation of 30% open space. Here is just a map of those parcels. On the on the top right corner generally gives you an idea of where it is along Hickory Riz, right kind of in between Hickory Riz and Lower Rocky River Road. The blue shaded area on the top right is where our corporate limits are. So it's a non contiguous voluntary annexation in front of you.
Thank you. Real quick, you are not screen sharing at the moment, so we cannot see what you're
None of it was. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go back. I'll restart again. Sorry about that. I thought I did. There you go. Can you see it now?
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. Let me let me pick back up with the So, okay, going going back to those seven parcels, that is on the screen. So you have those seven individual PIN numbers. Again, 459 single family homes, two different lot sizes in front of you for consideration, 60 feet wide and 70 feet wide. The request for rezoning is to take it out from the county, County Residential CR, to Harrisburg zoning classification, which is Conditional Residential Low Density. And again, as I noted earlier, it's going to utilize a conservation principle which requires a minimum of 30% open space preservation. Going back to the site location, you can see on the top right corner where you have the site marker and then the stated blue area is where our current municipal district is. So that gives you a general idea of how far it is from the current corporate boundary. That is what we call a non contiguous annexation, which simply means the corporate boundary are not joining together as it stands today. So what was included in your packet along with a lot of information, staff report, your mapping, site plan is a color rendering of this overall site plan. So I'll use this as a basis to kind of walk through some of the highlights of the subdivision itself. And we'll go through some of the traffic improvements. And we'll go through some of the traffic improvements, conditions we are imposing on the project. And once I'm done with my presentation, we'll hand it over to the applicant and then we'll follow up with a Q and A, open a public hearing and then close a public hearing today. So in front of you on the screen is how the 459 homes are laid out. You can see different color coding. So those two different colors simply mean those are two different lot sizes, as I noted earlier. So along the perimeter of the subdivision, there is 50, 50 feet wide buffer throughout throughout the subdivision. So that will be all around it. We also have internal to the side, there are 10, 10-foot wide asphalt greenways. They'll be connecting different parts of the community. We also have 10-foot wide concrete multi-use pad that is basically run, going to run along a main drag that connects main transportation network that connects Hickory Riz Road to Lower Rock River Road. So it will follow that major road that will be connecting two sides of the thoroughfare. We also have a natural surface trail internal to the subdivision. These are not public. These are most likely will be homeowners association maintained trail, but residents can use those and connect to the public multi-use path and public greenways once it is built. There is also on the lower corner, you can see a green open space area. That's a Blackwalder Natural Habitat area, which was identified as a sensitive area in our land use plan. And as part of this project, we required the applicant to do a field assessment and 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 kind of designate that side as undisturbed, natural, open space with some natural trail that the residents, not only inside the subdivision, but the residents of Harrisburg can enjoy. Throughout the side, you'll see a community gathering space spread along the subdivision so that future residents can enjoy it. Some of those will have active amenities, some will be passive. And there will be also some clubhouse of that nature planned for this community as we move along. One of the new requirements we've been putting on a newer subdivision, even though this is not a requirement in the current UDO, but is a requirement we're adding into the update of our UDO is if if there are back-to-back lots like you see on the screen where my mouse is, hopefully you can see where I'm hovering it. In those kind of circumstances, we're requiring the applicant provide a planted landscape easement. The minimum requirement is eight feet. So that remains with the property planted and the property owner cannot disturb that. And that becomes part of the open space in perpetuity as well. Couple of things we added after the planning board meeting was there was some comments that the planning board members made about pedestrian crossings at some key strategic locations. We thought that made sense. That was a good conversation. So we are adding a condition that the applicant will work with the town staff to identify those locations, most likely where those amenity centers are and where the trail crossings are. So we will be intentional to to find those proper mid-block crossings to allow allow a safe crossing for folks as they utilize those amenities. Plus, it's also going to serve as one of the friction factors to to slow down the traffic if somebody is trying to speak through the community. The other element after the planning board meeting we added was, as you recall, early on, I talked about 50-foot wide perimeter buffer, but along the thoroughfare, along Hickory Riz Road, which has a very small frontis, and and along Lower Rock River Road, we will be requiring a berm be installed so that there are proper screening along the thoroughfare that council had discussed in in past meetings. So the the community is planned to be built in phases, in three phases. The phase one will consist of 142 homes. Phase two will include 227 homes and phase three will include 90 homes. So you can see how that phasing will work and come kind of connect the community together on both both ends of thoroughfare. One of the conditions we have added in, this is based on the experience we had with with one of the subdivision we had approved in the past, is to make sure that the connection that we wanted from Hickory Riz to Lower Rock River is built and is not left to the end of the lot. So you were not waiting towards end of a project. So we've added a condition that that road connection you see in red that connects Hickory Riz Road and Lower Rock River Road will need to be built as part of phase two. And as you can see on the screen, phase two has 227 homes. But we have added a condition that it needs to be built with with 173 homes. So remainder of that 227 homes will be held and not approved until that road connection is completed. And phase three obviously will not be built without that as well. The other big component of this project that we've negotiated with the applicant is to obtain a 25-foot greenway easement. So if that, if it goes goes to north a few few miles, then you will you'll connect to our Reedy Creek Greenway Trail. That is the main main greenway that that goes through our community. So we're adding a condition that the applicant, as they try to secure the sewer easement to connect to the sewer line, they will be securing and providing that greenway access easement to the town so we can build a greenway in the future. As part of the project, we are also securing a site for a future fire station. That location was determined after consultation with with our fire department and the needs of future fire service growth areas. So that location, if you recall, early on at the neighborhood meeting, we had that location shown on the Hickory Riz side. But after further discussions with with the fire chief and the staff over there, we 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 kind of moved that to Lower Rock River because that's where the necessity will be in the near future as we as we grow. So the slide in front of you is is it was included in your package. This talks about the technical data. So the total acreage is 352.11 acres with 459 homes planned. The gross density for the site is 1.33 units per acre. Here are some examples of the home renderings that was provided by D.R. Horton. And just and I believe they will speak to those when when it is turned of the presentation as well. Going back to how does this, how does this rezoning request fit with our land use recommendations? So the star that is on your right-hand side of the screen is where the property is. So that is in a in a very low-density residential area from a land use classification perspective. What? So basically, that area is planned for predominantly rural while allowing residential uses at a very low densities. Conservation design is what is recommended for those areas. And in terms of gross density, are less than one unit per acre if it is a conventional subdivision. And if it is designed with conservation principles that preserving 30% or or more open space, then you can you can have densities up to two units per acre. But in this case, it is 1.33. It will be capped at 1.33 units. So in that land is planned, you also see there is a there is a recommendation on how does the very low-density residential translate into the UDA zoning classification. So what is highlighted on your screen is is the translation. So there are either RE or RL are kind of recommended zoning classification. And RL district, as it stands today, allows up to a maximum of two units per acre. And as I noted earlier, the conditional residential low-density rezoning in front of you for a public hearing is, if approved, will be capped at 1.33 and and aligns with that RL district that we have in our UDO. As we talked about the adequate public facilities, so there is sewer access along Reedy Creek. The applicant will have to extend at their own cost from their subdivision, taking it up north to Reedy Creek to connect to the main front line. It will be a gravity flow, so there will be no pumps installed as part of this. We do not allow that unless there are circumstances that necessitate it. So it's a gravity flow sewer that the applicant will be building. Water access is is along Hickory Riz Road. And again, like with sewer, any any extension or upgrade of those water line to bring to their community will solely be part of the applicant. There is adequate police fire and sanitation and will be offered if the rezoning and annexation is approved. We did reach out to the school to get some impact on on the schools based on this new addition of homes. So if you look on the left-hand side of your screen, that shows your student generation for full build-out. So it's not broken down by phases. It is if those 459 homes were to come online, said, what is the impact of those homes and students generated for each of those schools? So elementary, it is expected to generate 117 students. Middle school is 89 and high school is 118. So how does that translate to the capacity? On your right-hand side, you can see where the current capacity is for each of those schools and what future capacity will be if this project and all the other projects that are in the pipeline throughout that school district. So that impact is there for your information. Again, this is not something we do at Harrisburg. This is strictly coming out from Kibera's County Schools and we always offer that to the council and public for conservation. Going back to the traffic impact assessments, TIA was completed for this. A full TIA report was also included in the packet, is in the packet for council and public consumption. What I'll do is I'll walk through some of the highlights of what those improvements are. On the left, on the right-hand side of the screen is is a page taken out of the TIA that summarizes what those traffic improvements are. On the left-hand side is what I will kind of walk you through those points so you can see where those locations are. So on the top left-hand side is is the intersection of Hickory Riz Road and Rocky River Road. So there is a mitigation traffic improvement as part of this project. So it will install a right turn lane with 100-foot stories. And there is already a left turn lane from Hickory Riz going to Rocky River Road has 125 feet stories for vehicles. So as part of this project, that will be extended to 425 feet. If you look on the top right corner with the blue dot, a blue circle, that is the intersection of Rocky River Road and Lower Rock River Road. So there will be a project, traffic mitigation project as part of this subdivision as well, which will be adding a 200-foot right turn lane. And you can see there is in blue, there is a westbound and 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 a overlap mitigation highlighted in blue, which will be part of a different project down on Lower Rocky River Road. It just happened that those mitigations were overlapped. That's why you see those in blue and is part of the other project. So the next is down at the bottom of the screen, at the intersection of Hickory Riz Road and Lower Rocky River Road. Simply adding, so adding a right turn lane with with 100-foot stories there as part of this project as well. The next mitigation coming out of this is is the school entrance, School Drive One, where you see today a mini roundabout. As we did a TIA, adding this project into the system, it required that we add a left turn lane into the roundabout. So we already had discussion with NC DOT and the applicant. So just simply adding a left turn lane is is not an option to the existing mini roundabout. So there will have to be some modification to the roundabout. How does that look like? We don't know that yet, but applicant is fully aware that it may have to be rebuilt to the size that DOT will require. So that will come down the pipeline, but we've added that as a condition of of the project as well. The the next several improvements are the access point improvements for the subdivision. So access one, you see like multiple turning movement and stacking improvements on access one along Hickory Riz Road. Access two also have same turning movement improvements left in from Hickory Riz Road and right in from Hickory Riz Road and left in and left out from that access road. Same with access three and four on Lower Rocky River Road. So those are all triggered by those drive access coming in and out of the subdivision. And you can see those turning lanes highlighted there as well.
Thank you. What is the distance between access one and School Drive Two?
I will, I don't have that information in front of me, but we'll we'll I know the engineer is online. I'll have kind of this is kind of alert to him that he'll look at that number and we'll share that with you.
Is there a sidewalk being added there or no?
Is there is there sidewalk being being added? So the sidewalk will be added as part of a project if it if it fronts any any thoroughfare. So wherever that front is is, that sidewalk and curb and gutter will be part of the traffic improvements regardless of a TIA.
It would seem like you want to go ahead and put that sidewalk in to make it convenient for that neighborhood.
Are you talking about the sidewalk between access one and access two?
Access one and School Drive Two.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely, yeah, talk about that and and the council have every you have opportunity to add that as a condition as part of the rezoning. So just going through some of the conditions, I know there are a lot of notes in the site plan that you may not have had a chance to go through, but we we try to highlight some of the major elements we don't want to miss as we go through different phases once it is approved. So those are kind of bubbled up as a conditions of of approval. The first one is basically your your rules and regulations. Even if we miss something, if we find something down the line, the applicant will still be liable and will need to comply with those. The second is about your primary cliding material, noting that vinyl siding will not be used on any of the homes. The third condition is agreeing to all of the TIA improvements that I highlighted in my previous slides. The condition number four that was highlighted during my presentation is about those back-to-back lot landscape easement, because those are not in the UDO. We we've added that as a condition, so we don't miss that in the next step. Applicant five is about the fire station dedication, fire station location dedication for future station. Applicant six is regarding that Blackwalder Natural Site that I had identified in the site during during the presentation, again, just to make sure that it is protected and and remains open and protected in 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 perpetuity and cannot be disturbed. We also added that condition about the 25-foot public greenway along the Reedy Creek. No exposed concrete foundations. So the the materials will be chosen and the right is allowed by the code will be extended to the ground. There is a condition about the mailbox clusters. This is based on the experience in the past with some of the newer subdivisions that those were not ADA standards and we wanted to put that as a conditions, so those are not missed. And the next one, number 10, is about the heritage trees and and preserving those as we go through the preliminary plat and and kind of preserving and identifying those throughout the process. Number 11 is is a newer conditions we started adding to the subdivisions requiring all of the stormwater pond. If it is a wet pond, those will require minimum depth and and pool area and also require fountains. So those are added as a condition. As I, as you recall, condition number 12 goes back to that connection between Lower Rocky River Road and Hickory Riz Road. So we've capped the number of lots they can build or plat before the road needs to be completed. The condition number 13 goes to the roadway cross-sections. We've had some challenges in the past where the applicant have kind of had some disagreement with us regarding the roadway cross-sections. So we wanted to put that as a condition so there's no disagreement in the future. Condition number 14 and 15, as I noted earlier, were added after the planning board meeting regarding the berm along the thoroughfare and also the pedestrian crosswalk at possible locations at the amenity centers and trails. So this slide slide is just to give you a comparison of, I know we did this table at the last rezoning. That was within the ETZ and this one is a little tricky because the by right, we cannot do by right because the property is in the county. But I just wanted to have this table just for reference that if if the property had to be done by right, they would be able to build 176 lot, two-acre lot minimum versus 459 lots. In our in our case, the subdivision open space is is not required by the county standards versus where we versus where we are getting through our conditional rezoning. And rezoning to our classification will allow us to preserve that 40% open space. The commitment to quality materials, again, at the county standards, none required. We do require those. The buffer requirements, none at the county by right. We do require as part of this rezoning. Commitments to road improvements, there are some. If the TIA is triggered, there would be some, but again, looking at some of the traffic numbers and how we do mitigation, ours is more restrictive and we require more during our conditional rezoning. And same goes to the commitments to greenways and the future fire station. So this is, wanted to have that slide for your reference, even though it's not apple-to-apple comparison like we did in other projects. So those were kind of the conditional rezoning, but as we have combined this process, we also have as part of this rezoning, there is annexation request. It's a voluntary non-contiguous annexation of those seven parcels, part of the rezoning. And again, as I noted, it's to build those 459 homes as required by law. We published notice of public hearing for annexation and provided notification to the property owners as well. Here is again the annexation plat, which is just follows that site plan boundary. If you look, if you look on the screen, that fine line where you see on the lower right-hand corner, that is the Blackwolder natural habitat area that we are surveying and plating it separately. So it's deeded and it cannot be disturbed as part of the plating process as well. So we did hold neighborhood meeting on March 5th for this. As a matter of fact, I think we did two neighborhood meetings for this project. And the proposed rezoning, as I've noted earlier, aligns with our help recommendation and also the UDO rezoning classification that we have currently in the books. And in some cases goes beyond our current requirements and we're able to get some of the positive added into this project. This project took two years in the making. I think I remember having conversation about this project right when I arrived in Harrisburg in October of 2018. So it took almost two years, more than two years before it came to the public hearing. The planning and zoning board heard the rezoning request at the March 16th meeting and recommended council approve the rezoning request. Again, the requested voluntary annexation is currently in the county and is non-contiguous. We are recommending today, the council opened the public hearing, hold the public hearing, close the public hearing, and the final action will be at the May 10th, May 10th meeting. Those are all the slides I have. Happy to address any questions you may have for me or I can pass it over to the applicant so you can hear from them and we can address questions at then whichever where the council prefer.
Questions, Sushil?
Sushil, Councilman Selberg here. Would you please address to our residents when this information becomes public? Because actually this thing's been on the board for about three years, two that you're aware of. But why do the residents not know about it? And when do the residents get informed about when a development like this actually comes to fruition? And more importantly, how many developments do you work on that never see the light of day?
So the public interaction or the public is aware of the, of the project early on when we hold the neighborhood meeting. So that's, that's the very first opportunity for public to know what the project at a high level is at that initial stage. Understand that after the neighborhood meetings are held and the expectations are expressed by the residents, the applicant tries to address those and we go through the public, we go through the staff review to make sure what, what the proposal is in front of us, aligns with our help and UDO recommendation. And there is, there's a lot of time in between the neighborhood meeting and we take it to the planning board that the public is not aware of. And sometimes when a project goes for too long, that may seem there is a long gap. But that's because we're working to make sure the project is right fit for our community. When it is ready for the planning board meeting, that notification is posted on the property and on our website. So the public is aware at that stage. And when it is a public hearing at the council, it is also publicized in the newspaper and also on our social media and the adjacent property owners are also notified by regular mail. So those are the different points in where we have opportunity to directly reach out to the residents. Having said that, we are always at the pleasure of our residents to reach out to us and ask any questions about any project that we have in play. The second question, how many projects never see the light up? It's hard to say, but generally I can, I can tell you that not every project that comes to the staff for review makes it in front of you. So I don't have the number calculated. We can, we can look at that council member Selberg, but out of, if we look at 100%, I think there are like 40 to 50% never, never come, come in front of you. At some point, they either do not want to follow staff directive to meet the UDO and help requirements or the community expectations, or they just simply don't want to follow the rules. There are times that we hold the neighborhood meeting and the project never comes back. There are also times where we never hold neighborhood meetings. So it just depends on, on the project types. Does that address, address your question?
Yes, thank you so much, Sushil.
Any other questions from council member before I hand it over to the applicant? Okay, yeah, we'll address more questions. At this point, I will, Rizet, I think you'll take over. I'll have your presentation ready and let me know and then I'll advance the slides for you. There you go.
Great, thank you, Sushil. Mayor, members of council and staff, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Bridget Grant and I'm a land use and development consultant with Morin Van Allen. And we are pleased to be here tonight representing DR Horton on this rezoning. I'm here with Kristen Bickman and Marty Davis with DR Horton, as well as Mark Heim and Mason Greason from Land Design. Our team is going to give a quick presentation. Sushil's done a great job sort of laying the foundation, so we'll just touch on a few other things. But to start, Sushil, you can go ahead and skip over the next slide, which just represents our team, DR Horton, Morin Van Allen, and Land Design. I'm going to let Kristen give a quick interview and specific to this site.
Good evening, everybody. All right, hearing a little bit of stack, static and background noise, but hopefully you all can hear me okay. Thank you all for your time tonight, greatly appreciate it. My name is Kristen Bickman. I am division president for the Charlotte Division here with DR Horton. I've got Marty Davis with me. One, I just want to say, we really appreciate everybody's time. This community has been something we've discussed with you all and with the community for quite some time. And we really appreciate all the feedback that we've been able to get throughout this process so that we can really mold this community into one that we're confident that everybody's going to be very excited and proud of. So if you know anything about DR Horton, we've been in business for over 40 years since 1978. We are the number one builder across the nation. We build multiple different styles of homes as you see here. We really focus on being a builder for everyone and providing homes through all stages of life, whether it's your first home, whether it is a second, third time move-up, whether you're looking for something to grow and have a family in or something that you're looking to downsize. We've got something for everybody. And we have so many different styles of homes, even on the exterior, that really provide a lot of variety, as you can see in this picture shown. But it also really complements each other in the streetscape throughout the community. We believe that, you know, building a new home and finding a community, it's not just about the house. It's about the community and the town and the city that you're going to live within. And we look at everything in consideration of where are people going to go shopping and dining and entertainment? How are they going to find entertainment even within their own community? Do they have nice yard space? Are they going to get to enjoy amenities? And that's something that we are really excited about here for Orchid Ridge with having the amenities, as Sushil explained, from the clubhouse, pool, walking paths, pocket parks throughout the community. That's something that we're, we're really proud of to be able to offer here. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer for them, answer them for you. But again, thank you guys so much for your feedback throughout this process to get where we are today.
Thanks, Kristen. Sushil, if you could go ahead and jump ahead to the conditional zoning benefit slide, I think I'll start there. You did a pretty good job of going through the benefits of the Conservation District. So I just want to touch on the fact that we are seeking to rezone and annex this 352-acre site in a low-density form utilizing that RL and Conservation District zoning. Before we get into it, I'd just like to talk a little bit how, about how conditional zoning is really a tool in the toolbox to help you get a higher level of development for your community. If we were to come in and develop by right with the existing zoning, we wouldn't go through this public outreach process. We wouldn't be working with the community or with staff and council to look at opportunities to raise the bar on the quality of the design or the opportunities for partnership with the development team, benefits that go beyond the broader community. Conditional zoning creates a sort of negotiation and it's intended to be a collaborative process that creates something better than what you would get by right. It's essentially the idea that we're asking for something different than what zoning currently allows us to do. So we try to offer some benefit back. We have that higher level of community engagement. We provide certainty on the development. We provide higher level of design standards and we look for opportunities to have public benefit. All of this provides standards above the base level ordinance requirement. Go ahead, next slide. When you're doing conditional zoning, one of the things that comes with it is a very high-level set of design standards, development standards and notes. And so it really comes down to the devils in the details. We can show you pretty site plans all day long and show you that there are some larger lots and smaller lots on the interior. But these notes, these conditions are really what guarantee the legally binding commitment that you, what we have in this document is what you're going to get. Next slide. Go ahead and you can go past that. Thanks, I'm not used to not being able to drive. This is the original site plan that we proposed when we first met with staff. And while it may not look too different when we get to the next slide, we've been working over the past year on a number of iterations to respond to what we've heard from the community, from staff and from other stakeholders throughout the process. Next slide. When we started out, we heard some of the basic feedback to reduce the number of units, increase the lot sizes, increase the buffers, not only adjacent to other properties, but also how important it was to maintain that rural character down Hickory Ridge and Lower Rocky River, to provide some residential architectural quality standards, provide consistent fencing along the edges, maintain that rural character, as I mentioned, avoid clear cutting across the site when developing, increase tree save opportunities. There was a request to move the fire station land set aside that was originally on Hickory Ridge over to Lower Rocky River, to raise the bar overall, to basically justify why we were coming back and attempting to rezone again, and to look at how we could provide pockets of open space for each of the individual sort of clusters of home throughout the development. Next slide. We were able to check the box on each one of those items and were able to respond in some fashion to all of the feedback we heard. Again, in our attempt to be collaborative and to use the conditional zoning process as intended and really maximize the community engagement. Next slide. Sushil already went through this overall slide, so I'm not going to walk through all the planned features. He did a great job describing the next slide, which also included phasing and how we were going to provide the connection during the, during the second phase, but not before all the lots were released in the second phase. How we have those amenities throughout, open space is a common organizing element for the entire organization of the plan. And again, connectivity, trails and preservation is a major theme. Next slide, skip past that one, you've already covered it. This is another summary that we look at, where we looked at, like Sushil said, the by right plan is under the county, so that gives you one idea what we could have developed on the site. It's really that last column that just shows you as we move through the process, we're proposing 459 homes at 1.3 dwelling units per acre. We decreased our open space down to 40% to increase our lot sizes. We've included those quality materials, the 50-foot buffer around the periphery. Our minimum lot size is 12,000 square feet and our average lot size is a third of an acre. We've set aside usable land for a fire department on Lower Rocky River. We did a much more detailed analysis and commitment to serve the Blackwolder area. We were lucky enough to have the original biologist who identified the area back, I think in the 1990s, go out and reevaluate, reconfirm and provide a greater level of detail and survey for that area. We've provided an extensive trail network throughout. And while a traffic study is required, as Sushil mentioned, I think it's really important to point out that traffic improvements gained through the conditional zoning process are significantly higher than the types of traffic improvements you would typically get with by right development. We've included those restrictions on fence types. And in addition to what staff asked for the deeded tree save on the backside of the lot, we actually increased the area up to 30 feet on each person's lot. And we have again, that commitment to not clear cut. Next slide. Go ahead and skip over this, I think we've covered a good bit of the site plan features. This is the site plan showing where we are again in context and when looking at traffic. And as Sushil went over the specific improvements and the eight different intersections and access points that will all be improved, we anticipate that a lot of the peak hour traffic will be directed towards Rocky River Church Road. And again, that traffic study requires mitigation for impacts. We have to improve all of the areas that we're impacting to keep them at the same level that they would be without our development. The traffic improvements within the community are largely paid by private developers and not tax dollars. It's always interesting to see, you know, NC DOT and local municipalities don't always have the funding available to make some of these improvements, including the roundabout, the school, or widening that. And so when we come in for conditional zoning, it's an opportunity for us to provide greater traffic and transportation improvements that might not otherwise happen without developer investment. So the conditional zoning results in the implementation of more traffic improvements than you would achieve by right. Next. Just sort of closing with where we started, we believe we're using the conditional zoning process as intended. We had our required community meeting and then we had a second community meeting. We have found that it's sometimes helpful to go back after the first required community meeting and talk to the neighborhood and the surrounding stakeholders about what we were able to change in response to their feedback. We had a very positive planning board meeting and got unanimous support for the project. And we're here tonight for the public hearing. We have been able to provide certainty on the site plan and certainty on the access points and the phasing of access points to provide that guarantee that a connection will be provided earlier on between Lower Rocky River and Hickory Ridge. We've provided certainty in architectural materials and commitments to the site plan features. And again, in terms of public benefit, we have roadway improvements, increased open space and tree save trails and a donation of land to the future fire station. Sushil, I think that's it for us and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, back to the mayor and council. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to address before you open for public hearing or to the applicant at this point.
Smith. Back to the earlier question, I think the comment was that there was no right-of-way for NC DOT on the road for a sidewalk.
The council member Smith, are you referring to, again?
Hickory Ridge, Hickory Ridge Elementary School.
His question was related to whether or not the connection could be made from the access point of this proposed development to Hickory Ridge Elementary School. And there was a comment in the chat that said that there was not state right-of-way available for a sidewalk. I think you just want to elaborate on that comment.
Okay, I didn't see that comment. Who made that comment?
Sushil, this is Bridget, a resident made it. I was able to have one of our engineers confirm. It's over 2,700 linear feet between the school, act- It's over 2,700 linear feet between the school access drive and our access drive. And we aren't able to confirm whether or not there's right of way availability, but that distance is essentially for scale over, about over half a mile.
Okay, and like council member Smith, you noted it, it makes sense to explore that opportunity and whether we'll be able to get it or not, given the right of way complications, that's down the road. But you could, as a council, add that as, as a condition to at least explore that option.
I just think it would help with the traffic opportunity there. Could alleviate some traffic if these proposed residents would have a way to get to that elementary school.
Yes, that makes sense.
Or bicycle or heavy. But then at that point, that would also quite, that would also open up the door, I think for, we'd have to have a pedestrian crossing there as well.
Correct.
Okay, this is Mason Greysland Land Design. That, that's something we can explore for sure. It also is, you know, MCDOT, I know works with a lot of the towns in there. It would actually ultimately be up to them whether they would grant sidewalk connection at that point, if they feel it's safe in nature, depending on the right of way that we have.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have one additional, is there? Is there a rental limitation on this neighborhood? You've seen it on townhomes. And I think Marcus Collins' property was, but actually put one in into a development. Is there one in this neighborhood?
Currently, the way it stands today, we do not have the rental cap like we had in some of the projects before. And, and council member Smith, if you recall, we had this conversation that the UDO does not allow me as a staff to have that condition. But if the council had the desire to add that condition, you, you can do that at this point. This is the point to have that conversation.
This is Councilman Dillinger, I have several comments. I guess first that kind of relates to that, there was an article that came out this, in the past two weeks that in Texas, DR Horton developed 125, 24 homes. They rented them all out and then sold the whole development to an investment firm. Are we going to see anything like that with this neighborhood?
Well, I will let DR Horton folks address that question and maybe they know more about the specific example. But we, we as a town, if, if there is a desire to add some rental cap like we've done in the past, I think we've done 10%. If that's the path council wants to, we, we have the opportunity to add that as a condition, as long as the applicant agrees to it.
So to address the, the question regarding DR Horton doing developments for rental, we are doing some developments for rental across the United States as many other builders are. In this time, we've seen a lot of people through COVID that have kind of wanted to move out of apartment living or out of condo living, but still want to rent. And so in those cases, that's where this build for rent idea has, has birthed, if you will. We have no plans on building this as a build to rent. This is a high, higher end community that of this size, we would not be looking to rent out these properties. Now, there are people that buy homes, of course, that if I bought my home and wanted to rent it out at a later date, if I moved, that's where you would only be able to restrict that by putting some type of limitation. As you mentioned, Sushil, putting a rental restriction of a percentage. The only thing that I, I would want to, to raise to everybody is that rental restrictions can actually impact the type of loans that homeowners are able to, to get in communities as well. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, thank you, Chris.
Christian, this is Councilman Russo. Well, would you be willing to do 10%? And I don't think that anybody that's going to buy these kind of houses is going to have any problem getting a loan. So I don't know, I don't know what you mean by that, but we definitely, we definitely don't want you coming here and build something and rent them all out. That's definitely not our plan.
I completely understand and, and I would not be opposed to having a rental restriction like that. Again, I just wanted to, to note that sometimes it does impact the type of loans that are available. And I, I honestly have to circle back to understand what types of loans they are.
Well, that's definitely considered a concern of mine, so I definitely would like, I would like you to have addressed that.
I'd support that, Robert.
And Chris, we've had some situations in existing neighborhoods that are closing into the 50% mark. And obviously what happens to those houses is a little different than those that are, that's the concern. So several neighborhoods are like that. I know this price point's a little higher, but larger price points are also jumping into the rental market as well. We don't have a lot of rental anything in this town. So 10%, I think would be amenable to probably all the council members, if you could look into that.
I understand, yes, happy to look into that.
This is Councilman Dillinger, I have several other things and I want to make sure that I understand. So there's basically just two sized lots. 227 of them are basically going to be 0.275 of an acre and 232 are going to be 0.276 of an acre, which that's leaning more towards a quarter acre than a third of an acre at 0.33. So when I go and see that slide, it says the average are a third, a third of an acre. I'm a little bit confused there. Bridgette, could you maybe go back to that slide where you had?
Michelle, will you go back to the summary table for me? Councilmember Dillinger, thank you for that question. The lots aren't exactly, they're, they're 60 foot wide, I believe, and 70 foot wide, but the depths vary on each of the lots. So there are a number of lots that far exceed the third of an acre. And then there are other lots that are no less than a quarter of an acre.
Okay, do you have that breakdown at all, Bridgette?
We don't have a breakdown. Again, we know, we know that there's a mix. And when we did the calculations on all of them, the average slated out to, there we go, the average slated out to a third of an acre, because the minimum is 0.25 acres. There are a number of lots that had to be larger than a third of an acre in order to get us to the average.
Okay, do you know how, just the homes themselves, do you know how many acre, how much acreage that actually takes up?
It would be the 352 less 40%, well, less the percent open space, I don't have that in front of me right now.
All right, thank you. And, and while we have the slide up, so I see that the 50 foot perimeter, I see it referenced in two places, so I want to be sure to understand for the residents, it's the 50 foot perimeter is going to go around the whole development or just on the two sides that you see there labeled on this diagram?
Councilmember Dillinger, that is around the entire subdivision. And to add to that, the front is along the thoroughfare, the Hickory Ridge and Lower Rocky River Road. We're exploring adding a berm rather than simply a 50 foot wide buffer. But the 50 foot wide buffer would be throughout the perimeter of entire subdivision.
Okay, and I, and I appreciate that and I heard you say about the berm. When I look at the conditional rezoning, I see the 50 foot berm here, but I do not see that listed as a particular conditional rezoning. And I know that's probably important to the residents.
The, the site plan itself, once approved, is, is part of a condition. The statements that you saw as part of the conditions are one component to it. And the site plan that you see on the screen and every notation that was included in your package makes it a conditional rezoning. So it, those are kind of, they both go hand in hand.
I'm just trying to get clarity to make sure for the residents that are listening that are around there. And if they pull up this document, they see only 50 feet on two sides there, so I wanted to get clarity there.
Happy to clarify that on the notes.
All right, thank you. I noticed also that there are 13 SCMs. I see one, one, one kind of natural water, but there are 13 what we know as BMPs. I want, are there going to be fences? I've heard that there will be, that you did address that there will be fountains, but there are going to be fences around these, that seems an awful lot, which is a good thing to be sure to catch the water. But also, as we know, that we've had an issue with a certain other neighborhood, that I would like to understand that that DR Horton, when they present this to the HOA, that it's understanding and it's written in there that they will become responsible for those and that they, that the HOA will not accept it. And we will not turn it over until it has been truly, yes, certified by our.
By a third party and an agreement with us. We don't want to certify in a good, we want a third party. And that's typically what's happening in Bloom right now, some third parties actually certify it. Rodney's pointed there.
We have some bad experience with, with our stormwater management in some of the subdivisions. And I'll let, let Rob speak to that, but I think we have, we have a pretty established process now and also have a better design criteria for all of this stormwater control measures.
The cost going back to the HOA is pretty significant. That is the absolute largest cost for the Bloom neighborhood past the swimming pool, based on the amount of escrow money that needs to be put away, as well as just the maintenance and the ongoing maintenance of those ponds. With this many of them, that number is going to be even larger than what Bloom is sitting on. So really to evaluate that, because it's going to go back, my HOA dues doubled this year as a result of this box.
Yeah, I mean, 13 to me does seem like an awful lot, so I, I think people might be shocked. So let me also ask, and look, it's great, the, the buffers that go between the back of each lot, excellent. I'm great, I'm so thankful that they're going to be deeded and need to help to understand here again, when H, when DR Horton goes to sell these lots, that it is written and in the contract that this is a deeded area, that this cannot be cut down because there could be some friction that come between neighbors. And if this is part of the deed that says this is going to be a deeded natural area at the back of their lots, are they going to specifically say that in their literature that they provide to prospective buyers?
Thank you, Councilman Dillinger, they, they will. We have committed that this will be a deed restriction, so it will be in the covenants. So when someone's purchasing a home, and I think all of us know, we have HOAs and we have restrictive covenants that say what we can or cannot do. HOAs are pretty, pretty typically strong in enforcing preserving a deed restriction like this that directly impacts your adjacent neighbor as well.
All right, thank you for that, Bridgette. And I think my last question is, and maybe Sushil can probably help on this, the trees that are going to be planted along the streets, is that going to be the HOA's responsibility? Or is that now, I know we passed a tree ordinance, is that going to be on the town to maintain those streets?
So the, the streets, once they are built, those will be handed over to the town once it is built to our standards and the street trees are part of the road cross section. Those will be our responsibility, once we take it over to maintain that.
So if I'm looking, so those trees are not really that many because I was kind of, or is that not a true statement? Because I thought when we were going through, if you were to go down one of the streets, you would see trees on both sides of the road, is that true or false?
You will see trees on both sides of the roads, that is a true statement.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And this, this is Mason, I guess to answer your BMP questions and your SCMs. The, the reason we have 13 of these is, again, we're honoring not clear cutting. We're trying to minimize and follow the natural drainage patterns. To my knowledge, there are not any fences on these as staff wanted these amenitized with fountains and to bring people around and gather or to use them as a, a natural gathering space, if you will. But yes, there, there is a certain amount, the smaller BMPs are actually a better cost benefit for maintaining by an HOA as opposed to us doing one large or two large BMPs to address all the storm waters issues.
Thank you, Mason.
You're welcome.
Has water and sewer easements already been granted?
We, yeah, we have not, we, we have created the exhibit and really it was depending on if this project moves forward or not. There's no reason to ruffle feathers and talk to, to folks up to a certain extent until we know this project would actually move forward or not.
How many, how many parcels are impacted just at best?
So I believe it's seven par, seven to 10 parcels, depending on what we end up doing with geotechnical service in our routing, but the one we have now is about seven parcels.
Thank you.
A long way up to rededicating.
And I'm sorry, Mason, this is Councilman Dillinger, there was one question I still had here.
Yeah.
How much blasting is going to have to be done to clear property that may affect the wells and the septic tanks that are along the property that where the homeowners are already out there in the country?
Mason, I think we talked about, and I'll let you jump in.
Go ahead.
We talked about the fact that we are still early on in doing the analysis to see where we would have to blast. You can see, Councilman Dillinger, we're a good bit away from some of the residents along the Monerosa side. Even though the site plan is very large, it looks small, we're actually a few hundred feet away from homes in those locations. And so until we do those final surveys and, and more due diligence, we won't know where that's going to happen. Mason, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, it was exactly what I was going to say, I was like, we, we don't have enough information right now to really, to give you a solid answer. And that's pretty much it.
Will you be able to work with those homeowners to say, hey, look, let's, I want my well or my septic tank examined now. Is there any possibility that, that it could be examined and say, okay, everything looks fine with it? And then if we know anything happens down the road that we can, I'm not going to blame responsibility, but to be sure that they have some reassurance that, that they don't have to go through expenses.
Kristen, is that something that you and Marty have done on other developments?
Yes, normally what we would, this is Marty Davis with DR Horton, and normally what we do is if blasting is required, sensors are set up in, between the blasting site and any residence, so we can monitor that. And, and if we were to be getting close to a structure or a septic tank, something like that, a series of smaller shots can be made to reduce the, the impact from, from blasting.
I think you've called.
Add to that, council member, our fire marshal will also review those plan. If there is a blasting required as part of a project, our fire marshal do get involved and we, we do listen to the residents if there is an impact or work with them throughout that process.
All right, thank you, I hope that gives them some reassurance. I'm sure that might be some questions that they may bring up in the public hearing.
Other questions? All right, thank you. We will go to public hearing, we're going to have a public hearing for those speaking for or against. I do have two names that signed up. I will go to those first and then we'll go to the chat windows. If you'd like to be recognized to speak, please raise your hand in the chat window and we will unmute you as we walk down that list. So first up is Linda Lentz. If you'd like to come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Lentz, 2530 Cedar Cove Drive, Harrisburg, excuse me, allergies. Okay, I am one of the landowners. My sister and I are simply selling our homes and relocating, just as any of you all would. Our mother owns a larger, larger parcel, more acreage. My parents purchased the property in 1955. And they purchased it. It wasn't inherited, it wasn't given to them. It was purchased. And they made substantial improvements to this property throughout the years and have worked, and worked really hard to sustain it and make it into the beautiful farm that it was. They, my father passed away in 2014. There have been numerous, numerous interest, numerous times interest in purchasing this property. And none of them were suitable. D.R. Horton Company came along and we've been working with them for a number of years now. And they have now come up with a plan, an excellent plan. Provides quality homes and it provides and preserves, which we were important, we were concerned with, considerable amount of green, natural areas. And that was important to us. I will say on a personal note, I have a daughter who has lived in two different D.R. Horton developments. The last one for seven years. And in both instances, D.R. Horton has done what they said they would do, and they have met all the requirements and expectations that they were required to do. As you all know, the planning department doesn't put forth a plan that doesn't meet the halibut of the UDO ordinance. This plan meets and exceeds the halibut and UDO requirements and meets and exceeds other additional town requirements. And there has been considerable input from the public, considerable, over the last two years, both public and private inputs about this program. And D.R. Horton has addressed all of the community input questions and concerns. There's a lot of positive outcomes that can come from this from also water and sewer. The fire department, I think that's a very positive thing. The fire department's definitely needed, get back some of my notes here, excuse me. The fire department improves your insurance rates. It provides fire prevention and preparedness right at your neighborhood. Medical resources are available from the fire department. Law enforcement presence, presence is usually at the long, at the fire department. Provides education programs, community events. And I know that noise from the fire department was addressed at one of the meetings. I don't think the noise from the fire department would affect any more than the airplane traffic that goes overhead in that area. And also, it was, the comment was that the fire department would disturb the domestic animals. There are no farms in that area. If you travel from the intersection of Rocky River Road and Lower Rocky River, all the way down to the intersection of Hickory Ridge, there's probably two or three places where the folks have a couple of horses. But no farming area in that area, in that, that place. Quite frankly, the noise from some of the shooting in that area is much more disturbing than a fire station would be. We've had concern about wetlands. The Corps of Army Engineers has done several studies. There's been two or three environmental studies, three in geological studies. As far as blasting, there won't be much. We've lived there long enough, and they just came back in November, December, did more core boring specimens to see. And there's been some talk of Rocky Ledge. If you look at the geological studies, that's not in this area. It's farther up toward the intersection of Rocky River and Lower Rocky River, down toward Burlwood, and then heads toward New Land. So I think they have addressed all the concerns. I think that over two years plus in planning, that this has ended up being a very desirable plan. That could be a very positive addition to this section of Cabarrus County.
Thank you. Next up, Diane Fisher.
Hello, that's what you may. Hello. Hi, I'm Linda's sister, Diane Fisher, and I'm part of this development also. And I just wanted to put a little face with my mother, Sadie Heffner. She passed away March 20th. It hasn't been too long ago here now. And she has been trying to see this get sold. And she's wanted it sold since 2016. And the first time it came up, it was denied. So we've actually been working on this since 2016. So my mother and father, and it's kind of surreal, their deed states that they bought this land April 12th, 1955, and I was three years old. I hear about generational land and people holding that over our heads, that there is so many generations. Well, actually, we have, like, my sister has great, you know, grandchildren. My mother had great grandchildren. But the thing about it, and, and building on what my sister said, my mother and father bought this land. He was in the Battle of the Bulge in World War II. And when he came out, he started building homes. He was a building contractor, built in Carolando, Valhalla, South Park, Charlotte, Concord, different areas. And, and some people live in this community in homes he built. So he was a builder, and he took this land, and it's called Cedar Cove Drive, the road. The whole land was full of cedars. So he took, and while he came home in the evenings, he worked. We didn't live on that property at, at then. And he went and worked, and I grew up basically on that property, watching him clear it for his cattle. And he had a cattle farm. And Dad was 92 when he passed away. Before he passed, years before, he told my mother, I want you to stay. You cannot live down there by yourself. Now, mother could have left, but she wouldn't leave us because we're all together. Now, they put in hundreds of thousands of dollars. And the road that goes into Cedar Cove Drive, if none of you have been there, I would welcome you to come. I would welcome you to come down, stop, talk, look. They put all this money and hard work into land that they, they own. Not, it wasn't given to them. It wasn't handed down and just, okay, this is your land. Do you do this? You build. I mean, and talk about blasting. There are other homes, and we've not had to blast any of them. My dad had a rental home on that property, his home, my sister's home, and mine. And none of them had had to have blasted. The problem we have is there is no water, no sewer. The land is clay. You cannot get a septic tank according to what the guidelines are this day of time for a septic tank. Timber Ridge, which is before us, okay? They had septic tanks that the guidelines were less stringent back then. They're getting older. I don't know what they'll do when they need new septic tank and lines. That's going to be a problem. But we cannot divide our land. I can't, I've had hundreds of people come in, want to buy an acre or two. We cannot because it will not work. So I had one council member who's no longer a council member in 2016 said, well, I'll vote for it whenever you don't have any other options. Well, it's kind of hard to have options when, when someone has worked so hard and put in hundreds of thousands of dollars to sustain the land, to live there, and then not be able to get their return out of. I've had one neighbor, well, you'll take the money and run. No, they don't realize there's a lot to this. I've had someone that came two weeks ago before my, well, three before my mother passed and come down our road, out in the front yard on our road, hawking and trying to yell at me about wetlands. That's some of the neighbors who have vilified us since we started to try to sell this property. And I've always said, we don't own property for a view. My father didn't own property for other people to tell him what to do. As far as the neighbors saying that you can, you can't sell. It would be like me trying to tell anyone here, I don't want you to sell that house or anything else. I mean, and as my sister said, this is a good development. I mean, we really feel like it would be good for Harrisburg. Number one, it's on the other side of the tracks. You've got 485 from Brookdale. You've got 485 on Almar Road. You've got 485 in Min Hill. You're going to have some people living there and not going and putting all the traffic on 49. And you're going to actually get something out in that area that can benefit the communities. The people around there, as she said, they do not farm anymore. It is, our pasture is rented out for hay to keep it moving. Now, I live on the back side. Monerosa is behind me. I feel sometimes like I'm going to be shot. There's not a horse on Lower Rocky River Road that could hear what I hear from a fire truck going now as I hear people shooting, pow, 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 pow. And I'll be down at my husband, he passed in 2014, his shop. And I'll be there, and it sounds like it's right there on me. I don't know where these people are shooting from. I mean, I do not know. They move in, they buy a new home, or they move in down Monerosa, where have you, Timber Ridge. They don't know the elevations. So I just feel like that this is time. This is time, and I think that we've worked really hard to try to be good stewards of my dad's land. As I say, he was a builder. My mother was in her right mind up until the day she passed. She had heard that zoning had sent it over. And she was hoping that if there was any way that this can be passed. Because we feel like it's, we worked hard to try to honor my dad's land to get a good builder that would build good homes and be a good steward to the community. And I think we've done that. And I just hope that this has been a long time coming. Like I say, 2016. And I just want to tell you to please consider it. And, you know, I hope that we can reach out to you individually in the coming month. And if there's any questions that we can answer, be glad to do it. But we have, I've heard, I've talked with you, Mr. Dellinger, the last meeting before they closed us down. And we have talked with D.R. Horton. We have tried to, you know, do what we can do to make this a good development. And again, the water and sewer, you can't have a dead end on water, I don't think. And I think that will help it. The water will keep moving. So I thank you for your time, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. So we're going to go to, to the Zoom session. If you would like to speak for or against this development, if you can jump on the chat and acknowledge, raise your hand, that will acknowledge you and bring you online. Keep me honest here, it's hard to see if they're popping in. Again, just raise your hand in the chat using Zoom, and we'll acknowledge you and unmute your line.
Mr. Mayor, we have Harrisburg RE Investments.
Harrisburg RE Investments. If you could state your name and address for the record, you'll get unmuted here in a second. Harrisburg Investments?
You said yes, I'm going to speak.
Yep, if you could unmute your phone, you should be able to speak. Tell us your name and address. Oh, yes, for the project? Is that, okay. Anyone else wishing to address for or against? Raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, we have Laura.
Hey, Laura, you can state your name and address for the record.
My name's Laura Carricker, and my address is 9058 Hickory Ridge Road in Harrisburg. I'm about a mile from this proposed development. And my objection to it is that it does not fit with the surroundings. It may look nice on paper, but it's non-contiguous. None of the utilities connect. There is no right of way along the road. So any waterline extension is going to have to be through negotiation of parcel owners and buying a deed of easement. Same thing with the sewer. If you've been out on the road in the afternoon during school dismissal time, you'll see how it backs up, the traffic backs up, and people can't get out of their driveway. This is just going to make it worse from the other end. Any of those road improvements you noted with turning lanes, those will require road widening, which again will create a need for an encroachment on private property. And people do not want their front, road frontage encroached and eaten up for the development of land elsewhere. This, as I said, is non-contiguous. It doesn't fit with any of the surroundings. All of the land around that area is large, open parcels with rural home sites. I have a, an issue with non-contiguous annexation. And it may look nice on paper, but, you know, it's still going to be 459 houses crammed in there, making our schools over capacity and our roads over capacity. And a few turning lanes is not going to mitigate traffic. I don't have any objection to anybody selling their private property. I expect there'll come a time when my family will want to do that, although we plan to stay here until we die. But this is just not in keeping with the surroundings. There's no housing developments of that density nearby, not next to it. It's kind of like some of the other developments where you have medium density zoning, and then you put a development in the middle that has tiny lots. I know these people said they were going to have minimum 12,000 square feet, which is still not even a third of an acre. So, you know, it's just, it doesn't fit with the surroundings. There's open space and large farms around it. And over in Monerosa, I believe the minimum lot requirement there is two acres, and there are two acre and five acre home sites over there. So this just isn't even in keeping with what's adjacent. And that's my objection.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Please raise your hand in the chat window, and we will acknowledge you and put you off mute.
Mr. Mayor, we have Colin.
Colin, if you could state your name and address for the record, you are off mute. Oh, you're back on it. Hi, Rob.
Yes, my name is Colin, 2064 Norma Drive. So in the Monerosa development, that kind of butts directly back up to, I guess it'll be kind of the eastern edge of this development, probably. edge of this development, probably. I guess what I wanna say is, it sounds like it's gonna happen almost no matter what, but we would really appreciate larger buffer zones between where we are at for the 10 homes in Montarosa that are going to be butting up against this new development. There was a little bit more done since the last proposal that was put in at the meeting we were at a year ago. You know, we bought, my wife and I bought this home four years ago because we really liked the CR zoning, I believe. You know, you come in and you have homes that are all on at least two acres, if not more. We own five here. And we really like not having a bunch of people around on top of each other. And from where you stand on my back porch now, I'm going to be staring at the back of dozens of homes there with a 10-foot wide greenway, which I would love to have nearby, just not directly in our backyard. You're talking about something that it even looks like in some of the mapping, that 10-foot greenway starts to encroach on the 50-foot buffer zone that's being talked about currently. But, we would really like to see much more than that, especially when some of the edges of this development that will be just butting up against other forest and open space, not other people's homes, has much larger buffer zones and kind of green areas. I think a lot of us here, and many of them are owners who have been here for decades, and just don't wanna see the area change. Similar to what Laura said, you know, we, it doesn't really match up with the rest of the scenery around here at all. You get a lot of homes that are on, one home per multiple acres and spaced out and you can run free. And this is just gonna throw a very large population density into an area that just doesn't quite add up or make sense with.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against, please raise your hand in the chat window. Of 30 seconds, anyone wishing to speak for or against? This is public hearing and we're actually deferring consideration to the next council meeting in May the 8th, 8th, somewhere else. May 10th is when this will actually be, the disposition will be either approved or denied by council on May 10. And we'll have another opportunity obviously between now and then for any concerned residents to speak up to their council members and/or staff. And if we need to also allow more conversation, don't worry about me. Moving to sustainability advisory board bylaws.
Alright, so this was a outcome of last month's meeting. It was actually an action item that was requested by council to go back and be reviewed by Rich and staff. And so, staff has not really had much efforts in presenting these bylaws other than making sure that they were reviewed by Rich. So, they're there for council's consideration and approval if agreeable.
And Rich did make some suggestive changes that were put into the bylaws. So, we should be completely clean at this point with this approval.
Yes. Thank you for sending it over to him to review.
I'll take a motion to approve this bylaw.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Proper executive. All in favor say aye. Council Ron. Council John. Council Rodney.
Aye.
Council Ian.
Aye.
Council Rick.
Aye.
Council Troy.
Aye.
Council Diamond. Moving to resolution requesting the 650 million dollars general against transportation bylaws.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I've got two back-to-back items here that are pretty monumental for the town, but hopefully we can go through them pretty quickly. So, the first one that I've got is the transportation GO. And so, this one is the set of bonds that were authorized back in 2017. And so, with that authorization, all we have to do now is select our winning bank and our winning lender and move forward with issuing those bonds next month. So, that's where we sit here. So, just to recap on the transportation projects, we have about 1.65 out of the 4 million that was authorized in projects that we've either completed or are about to get underway. So, we had street resurfacing in fiscal years 20 and 21 totaling a million dollars. Have the Caldwell Road sidewalk addition of up to about 250,000, that's on tonight. Harris Depot sidewalk addition, that was in the consent agenda, the reimbursement resolution for that of up to about 45,000. And then we have Hickory Ridge, Stallings and various other locations around town that can total up to about 255,000. We have a cost of issuance of up to 100,000, although it shouldn't reach anything close to that. The remaining 2,350,000 need to be issued by November 2024, as we have a seven-year clock from approval. The RFP process for this set of bonds, we worked with our advisors at Davenport and Company, our bond counsel with Parker Poe. U.S. Bank is our trustee for both sets of bonds. And then, of course, Rich as well. So, everyone was, has been so instrumental in helping pull everything together and work with the LGC as well to get everything established here. So, we distributed the RFP to over 60 financial institutions on March 1st. We had a due date of March 24th. And we asked bidders to give us options for 15- and 20-year projects. We received five proposals on the GO bonds. And so, here's a summary of those proposals that we got back. You'll see that four of the banks gave us 15- and 20-year proposals and one bank gave us only a 15-year proposal. So, we compared the best rate on the 15-year bonds with the best two rates on the 20-year bonds. And that brings us to this table. It's a little fuzzy, hopefully you can see it. But the 15-year with key government has a great eight at two-quarter. So, that was exciting. But the required debt service to squeeze that into 15 years was more aggressive. It was more than we had planned for in our model, as we've been planning for 20 years this entire time. So, we thought we'd see what the rates are like, see if it was possible to do it in 15 years. Our opinion is that that's a little bit too much for us to bite off with this first one. So, we evaluated both of the 20-year deals. And since we do have another issue coming in the next couple of years, we can reevaluate that 15-year model. And what we're thinking is take the 20 years now, make sure we don't overburden ourselves in this first couple of years. And then, if things are looking good on the second one, we might be able to get the 15-year option there and save a little money. So, when looking at the two 20-year bids here, we had a rate of 255 and 263. So, our main consideration came down to our call and prepayment provisions. And Capital One had some more restrictions and did not let us prepay or refinance these bonds in the first 10 years and then had a steeper penalty in the back half of the payment schedule. So, Sterling National Bank, who we have other debt with, they did the fire station and have also done the big one, the park and water tower. So, we're very familiar with them and comfortable with them. They gave us the 263 on 20 years and the call options are a lot more friendly. So, we have the flexibility to prepay in whole or in part at any date during the loan with a 1% penalty during year six through nine and then at par thereafter. So, that's pretty flexible for us to be able to maneuver these in the future. And then, of course, if we select Sterling, we do gain efficiencies because we already have our existing relationship with them. And then, we also hope to combine issuances with the revenue bonds that will go over next. And so, there are a lot of efficiencies gained from doing this whole project with one financial institution this time and then also piling on to the fact that we already have debt with Sterling. The remaining moves to issue these bonds are on May 4th, the LGC will consider approving the financing. On May 10th, we will consider adopting a final resolution at our town council meeting. And then, we'll close on these bonds by May 28th. So, the suggested motion for the GO bonds and transportation bonds is to adopt a resolution requesting the private sale of 1.65 million general obligation transportation bonds, this is a series 2021, to Sterling National Bank, which includes that 1.65 million not to exceed value and interest rate of 263 and a payment term to extend beyond May 1st, 2041. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
And ask teams this afternoon, this is Council Dillinger, if you'll just remind the public what we have already spent and how it was paid.
Yeah, so portions of the transportation bond projects have already occurred. Mostly repaving that was done this past fall and spring. And so, a good portion of this will be to refund ourselves for expenses already incurred related to resurfacing.
And we paid for that through which fund?
We paid through that. Brian, do you wanna comment on that?
Yeah, so when we know that we're going to end up financing the project, we cash flow that through the general fund. And then, when we take these proceeds out, it restores that borrowing from the general fund. It's not an official borrowing or a fund balance borrowing, anything like that. It's more of an accounting treatment, but essentially we did borrow from general fund.
Thank you.
Move for approval, Mayor? And motion on the floor? Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Council Ron. Council John. Council Rodney.
Aye.
Council Ian.
Aye.
Council Rick.
Aye.
Troy.
Aye.
Council Diamond. Question carries. That will resolution, right? Application on the seat for private placement revenue bond.
Are we ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. So, our second item here is for the water and sewer revenue bonds. So, this is essentially right in line with the GO bonds. We tried to time them together due to some of the permitting, the potential holdup on permitting for Morehead West. And by holdup, I'm only talking about a couple of weeks, making an LGC meeting. We had the flexibility to push this one back a month. And so, we've gotten the bank to hold their rate for us if that's necessary. So, there's a little bit of a potential delay here. It could get issued at the same time as GO bonds. But we have structured everything to where we have that month of flexibility in case the permits don't come in. So, our water and sewer projects that are included in this up to $4 million offering of revenue bonds is about 3.835 million in identified projects. We have the 2020-21 waterline upgrades of a million dollars and that project is complete. Or I'm sorry, that project has just started. The construction has just started on that. Britley number two pump station is almost complete. Francis Haven and Farmington Pump Station is complete. Morehead West Sewer Phase One will be going into construction next month. And then, we have cost of issuance of up to 100,000 again. So, the same exact process, we sent out the RFPs on the same date, asked for the same options. And we received four proposals back on the revenue bonds. The same situation here again, Key Government gave us the 15-year rate and then Pinnacle Sterling and Truist came in with the 15- and 20-year offerings. And so, we compared Sterling and Truist with their 20-year rates. So, Key once again had the good rate at two and a quarter. But, once again, it was more than we planned for by about 60,000 a year over the financial model. That's a lot to take on. So, we pulled back to the 20-year options and compared the 272 rate with Sterling and the 289 rate with Truist. In this case, we could go with the lowest rate and gain all of the other advantages of the efficiencies of the same lender, having all the paperwork and everything done at the same time. So, this one was more of a no-brainer here to go with Sterling on their 20-year option. So, our next moves on the revenue bonds are to select Sterling National Bank for their 20-year proposal. They did have the lowest rate, had the same flexibility with the prepayment options with the 1% penalty in year six through nine and a part thereafter. Like I've said, we've got the efficiencies gained by our existing relationship with Sterling as well as pairing this with the GO bonds. Our remaining schedule is to go to the LGC on May 4th to approve the financing. They have also given us the date of June 1st as a backup. On May 10th, council will consider adopting a bond order and a bond issuance and sale resolution. And then, on June 10th, June 10th is our closing deadline for these revenue bonds. And so, that gives us the flexibility to close the bonds in May or in June. So, this one is, the resolution here is to permit us to submit that application to the LGC for approval of a private placement revenue bond with Sterling National Bank. And we'll come back and award the actual details of that contract next month.
Any questions or motion? Move for approval, Mayor? A motion on the floor? Okay. Proper seconded. All in favor say aye. Council Ron.
Aye.
Council John. Council Rodney.
Aye.
Council Ian.
Aye.
Council Rick.
Aye.
Council Troy.
Aye.
Council Diamond. Question carries.
Thank you.
Next up, the conditional consideration for conditional rezoning of the Kellywood subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me share my slides so I don't forget about those. Can you see my slides now?
Yes.
Good evening again. The agenda in front of you is to consider action unconditional rezoning and zoning map amendment along with the annexation for H 2020 08R, which is Kellywood subdivision. The public hearing for both of these matters was held at the last council meeting. The request in front of you is to rezon 2.46 acres of property down on Plaza Road. The intent of the applicant here is to subdivide and build four single-family homes. The current zoning, the property is in the county and it's joined low-density residential. And the applicant is asking the property be rezoned to conditional residential low-density to allow for those subdivision of homes. On your screen, you see where the property is. The right-hand side inset gives you a general idea of where the property is located in relation to the corporate limit as it stands today. On the left-hand side is a little bit close-up look at the property alone. Plaza Road extends and not very far from Rocky River Road, where all the commercial and Farmington project is underway. Here is the site plan for that property. It's one single parcel. So, you can see it is subdivided, subdivided into four lots. We do have some open space, as we discussed at the public hearing, as part of the project. And we've already had conversation with the applicant to add some amenities in those. You got the landscape buffer, even though it is not a requirement, we have added that as a requirement and part of the rezoning to add eight-foot landscape buffer along the perimeter of the subdivision. We do have, as we talk through NC DOT and kind of trying to manage that access on the single homes, this is different than your bigger subdivision. We talked, there's no public roads as part of it. So, there will be direct access from Plaza Road. And one of the things we talked early on with DOT was rather than having four drive cuts, we will try to limit those. And we've done, what we have done and you see on the screen is the shared driveway. So, you'll have kind of two drive cuts that will serve two homes. Two homes each, so there won't be four drive cuts, as you would see in a traditional single homes along the road frontage. We also recognize there is a little bit of encroachment, but we've added a note that if the rezoning is approved and the project moves forward, that will be removed from the property and that encroachment will be taken care of. Here are some of the samples of what the homes will look like that we shared at the public hearing last month for your reference. And going back to the land use recommendation, the property, as you can see on the right-hand side where the star is, it's in a low-density residential area that allows for one to two units per acre and mostly designated for single-family homes. How does that align with the translation to the zoning district? So, if you look on the table up there, the low-density residential, you could, as per our hell. you could, as per our help, the recommendations were, you could do RL rezoning or RM1 if it is a right density or a public improvement district. So the proposal, the proposed rezoning in front of you is to rezon to conditional low-density residential for four homes, which comes down to 1.62 acres, meaning that RL criteria established in our UDA. Again, going back to the utilities, given the size of the community, there is not much of an impact for transportation. So a TIA was not needed. Utilities are in the area. And like I said in the previous project, it will be the applicant's cost to extend those utilities as needed. The schools impacts are minimal. We did not get a full impact statement, but we only got email back from the county saying four students will be generated, which is minimal to the minimal impact to the system we have. And there is adequate police, fire, and sanitation to offer to those four homes if the council approves this. We've added a few conditions, our standard that rules and regulations will apply at all levels. We have restricted the primary plating materials again to missionary or similar. No vinyl will be used on these homes. And also the condition like you heard in the previous presentation, no exposed concrete foundation. And the appropriate materials will be used to cover those up. Along with the rezoning, since we're combining, so there was annexation. The property is currently in the county, and we received voluntary annexation from the property owner. Since it does not touch the current corporate boundary, that's why we call it non-contiguous, but it is allowed by law. Non-contiguous annexation, I guess there was some comment made earlier sounding alarmed, but this is not uncommon. It happens throughout the state and is permitted by law as long as it is a voluntary annexation coming from the property owner and there are utilities available or can be extended to serve. The property, again, like noted earlier, is in the county and needs to be annexed. We did all the public notification requirement as required by law, posting in the paper and also sending letters to the adjoining property owners for annexation and also for rezoning. There is the annexation plat, again, just for a reference. It is just one parcel, 2.46 acres that is in front of you for rezoning and annexation. We did hold the neighborhood meeting like we do for every rezoning. This was held on December. We also had a planning and zoning board hearing in February, and there was a unanimous recommendation for approval by council. Council held public hearing on both rezoning and annexation at the March meeting. And staff reviewed and find it consistent with our help and the UDA. The requested voluntary annexation also follows the law. And hereby recommend that council consider approving the rezoning request and associated annexation of this parcel into town limits. With that, I'll open up for any questions. And we may have the applicant on the call. James, if you want to let her speak, if she wants to say a few words. I think she is in attendance, Kelly Woods. She may be under Harrisburg RE Investments.
Yeah, she's unable to speak if she needs to.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. My tablet died, my battery died. I just was able to log back in. Thank you so much, City Council, for taking this matter under consideration tonight. And I do wish that you are able to approve this. It will definitely add revenue. And so she'll covered everything very effectively and fantastically. Basically, just ask for your approval on this. And if there's any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions from council? Something to ask, and I'm willing, this is an opportunity one last time for anybody that would like to speak for or against this. If you want to raise your hand in the chat window, give us a couple of minutes for that. Else we'll go to the council for consideration, so. Anybody wish?
This is not a public hearing, but you can.
I understand, I'm allowing you that.
Okay. I just wanted to make clear.
No, I got it. But just give me one last chance. This is something we all talked about and one last chance. So I'm not seeing any. Or somebody made a comment.
Yeah, they're saying, people are telling one of the residents they can't connect to the chat to be able to say anything.
Yes, everybody has the ability to chat, but it's seen only by panelists.
The chat function backed us, but this is just raise your hand if you wish to speak for us, but else it looks like there is none, so I'll go to council for consideration. I'll return the motion, one way or another.
Motion approved, Mayor?
Motion on the floor? I'll say it. Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Councilman Ron. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on, she is saying she has gotten messages from neighbors that they can't log in and can't see or hear.
By all accounts, from my end, the meeting is functioning as expected.
She's saying they're telling her that the link aren't working, and so she told them to email, so I don't.
That's fine, yeah. And Laura, and I probably hear us, if you could have those folks email the council@harrisburgnc.org with whatever their questions or concerns are, we'll make sure they get appropriately recognized. And we won't be dispositioning the neighborhood we just talked about until next month.
Yeah, and Mayor, if there are any planning-related specific questions, they can also email to planning@harrisburgnc.org. And we'll need a written statement from legal counsel on this.
Yes, Rich, do you have a consistency statement ready for us?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Based on the staff report and presentation, the proposed rezoning request is consistent with the Harrisburg Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable and in the public interest.
I'll return the motion. So, move for motion. Motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded. All in favor say aye. Councilman Ron.
Aye.
Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving to consideration of amendment to rezoning condition number 15, Town Center Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. The item in front of you tonight is to consider amending the previously approved rezoning condition number 15 for the Harrisburg Town Center Project, H201814-R. So if you recall, the council approved the rezoning request back in May of 2019 to rezon the 15.03 acres of property from the current PUD to conditional city center. As we went through the process from the previous applicant, we had amended condition 15 now three times. First on December 9th of 2019, then on October 12th of 2020, and December 14, 2020, to simply extend that sunset, that would revert the approved conditional city center to the PUD. So we've been keeping on extending. And now the current deadline for reverting back to the PUD is April 30th, 2021. And the highlighted on the bold on your screen is the condition as it stands today, that the applicant agrees that the zoning sale revert to its original PUD if the applicant fails to submit and secure council approval on revised site plan by April 30th, 2021. So since we're kind of close to that deadline, we've received a request from the applicant to extend that to December 31st, 2021. Looks like there is a type where it's not by 60 days, it's by several months down to December 31st. That will allow us as a town staff and the council to work with the applicant to bring forward a town center proposal that we all can all like and kind of be able to be proud of. So the requested extension is going to be able to do so. If the condition 15 is not amended or extended before the end of the current deadline of April 30th, 2021, the approved city center zoning that occurred in 2019 will expire. So that city center rezoning will go away and it will revert back to the original PUD that was on the property. So also, if you recall, with the previous applicant not being part of the planning or the rezoning and taking it to the next level, the current property owner and the town. And I know the current property owner will be speaking after me. They have some potential parties interested to realize the vision of the town center to create a vibrant downtown that we had wanted to achieve for a very long time. And this requested extension will at least allow us to explore those options. So the amended condition will basically take the sunset from April 30th, 2021 and take it to December 31st. So you have on the screen at the very bottom how the condition will be changed if the council chose to approve today. So we are recommending approval because it has no negative impact on the current zoning. And we hope that council will consider that. I'll be happy to address any questions before I invite the applicant to speak and make their case in front of the council.
Questions? All right.
Okay. James, if you could let Mark.
Yes, I have Mark, Andrew, and Peter all have the ability to speak. They will have to unmute themselves as though Andrew is currently unmuted.
Okay, thank you, James. So Mark or Andrew, I don't know who is going to take the lead. So please let me know when to advance your slides, and I'll be happy to do so for you.
So she'll listen, Mark, I'll start real briefly. And I apologize, I'm a little under the weather, so I'm going to be brief. It's getting to be an awfully long meeting for you all as well. So, yeah, as Sushil eloquently outlined, I mean, essentially, all we're looking for is to extend this to the end of this year. And, you know, we do have a significant interest in this project. And Peter and Andrew have joined us on this call tonight and are going to be talking to you. I thought it would be more impactful to hear it coming from them than from us. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrew and Peter.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Sushil, if you don't mind advancing it one slide, and we can leave it on that slide for a good bit. Mr. Mayor, council members, it's an honor to be with you this evening. I know you've had a lot on your agenda tonight, and we'll be brief. Again, my name, full name is Andrew Holton. I work with LMG, which stands for Lansing Melbourne Group, which is a development group based out of Southern Florida, but I'm based in North Carolina and have been working primarily in North Carolina on development and public finance for most of my career. I've been on the private side now for about five years, but spent a good bit of time working for the state as an attorney with the State Treasurer's Office, working first with the Local Government Commission. So your earlier agenda items were particularly interesting to me. And also working more broadly with the Department of State Treasurer on a number of different investment-related issues. When I left the public sector, I was really focused on trying to create public-private partnerships that would help develop walkable communities in sort of secondary markets within North Carolina. And Harrisburg is exactly the type of market I was interested in. You're positioned well relative to major transportation corridors, including your new railway station. You've already invested a lot and have built out a retail infrastructure that many communities would be jealous of, including all sorts of national brands and strong presence. And you're part of a major metro area while still having your own sense of identity and your own sense of infrastructure. And that's something that we really look forward. I got to know the team at LMG when I was working in Kannapolis up the road. And we were working as part of the Kannapolis City Center Project there. We then sort of extended our partnership into Concord. And then have gotten to know Mark and Joe Murphy Senior and Joe Murphy Junior over the last few months as we've learned more about their initial discussions with you over a master plan vision and all the work that has been done. We've met with Sushil and Haynes once and have a meeting scheduled next week to talk a little bit more about what the master plan vision for Harrisburg Town Center can be. And we're very excited to be here, excited to be working with you and your staff, and look forward to what we can build together in Harrisburg Town Center. So I'd like to introduce you to Peter Floatz, who's the managing partner of LMG. He's got a long resume as a developer and a transportation expert. He's worked all over the world, has been working in North Carolina for about six years now. But what makes Peter unique and what really attracted me to LMG was its sort of public-private partnership bona fides. He has a great ability to work with public bodies to help make sure that the public interests in projects like this are achieved and that we take into account all that you'd like to see in your town center. He's worked on all sorts of communities in North Carolina now. And I've always been impressed by the way that he solves problems and sort of helps to make project work. So I think that together, our team can sort of join with the work that's already been done and can put together a vision that will truly serve your long-term interests. So with that, I'll turn it over to Peter. He'll tell you a little bit more about himself, the LMG team, and our eagerness to work in Harrisburg.
Thank you, Andrew. Members of the council, again, thank you for allowing us to say a few words tonight. We'll keep it brief, seeing it's 9:30 already. And I suggest most of you probably would rather be home by now than listening to another developer tell you how fun they are and how great they are and how experienced they are. Just to back up what Andrew said, I've personally been doing public-private partnership projects since 1986. I am the junior partner in LMG, the senior partner. Our primary investor is about 10 years older than I am. He's been doing this since the Trammell Crow days. He was on the board of the Investment Committee of Trammell Crow and then OPUS. We've been together for almost 20 years now, doing work across the United States. Hopefully, you see the map in front of you as a sign of age and wisdom that we've stayed out of California most of our lives, which is probably the smartest investment decision we could ever make. Most of our work's been east of the Mississippi. We are up the road and down the road from you right now. We're in Kannapolis finishing our first 290-unit apartment building. We got CO a couple of weeks ago. We're way ahead of our leasing projections. We're about 30% leased up right now after we've been open for about 10 days. We expect the building to be full by somewhere around September. We've also bought three more blocks of downtown and have kept the historic buildings there. And through the course of the pandemic, we bought a bunch last January. And over the course of the pandemic, we have leased every square inch that we have. So we're 100% leased with Main Street retail, mostly local tenants, the barber shop, the Realtor, the accountant, the insurance guy, the bike store and that. And it's what we love to do. It's what we really like to do. We broke ground in Concord a few weeks ago. We've been demolishing the old buildings next to the new city hall and then on Union Street there. Some of you may have noticed some of the work we're doing there. Actually, Sushil, if you advanced the slide, I think we might have a slide or two on that. Actually, this is Kannapolis. Where we're surrounding the baseball stadium with buildings. The big one in the foreground is the one that we just opened. So we've got about $100 million in investment we're making there, the first 50 of which is about to come to fruition. Can you advance one more, Sushil? Yeah, these are the buildings we're doing in downtown Concord. These are a little bit more dense than what we're looking at here in Harrisburg. There are six stories, trying to respond to the city's desire there to get some densification in their downtown. We're also in Gastonia right now. We're under construction with the Trenton Mill. We bought an old mill that's across the street from the new Fuse District to multipurpose ball field that they built. And we're restoring that building, 160-year-old building into loft apartments. And then we were recently selected by Mooresville to come into their downtown and do some lower-density stuff, three and four-story, that will complement some of the old historic retail that they've got going on. So I don't want to take too much of your time. Again, it's running on, and I'm really. I again, it's it's running on and I I'm really good at just going on and on about this. So if there's any questions, we'd love to have them. Otherwise, we're we're excited to sit down and roll up our sleeves and start planning this town center with you.
All right.
Back to Mayor and Council.
I attend a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have Rick as the first and who is the second?
Troy.
All right, all in favor, say aye going down the list. Councilman Ron, Councilman John, aye, Councilman Rodney, Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rip.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
So we're done. Motion carries. Code of Conduct change discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, so this was a I'll quickly turn it back over to you and the rest of council for this conversation. But during the March twenty-one council meeting, the council took action to remove a section of the code of conduct. And after that meeting, it was requested by a council member and then confirmed by Mayor Shasha to add it back to the agenda to reconsider that change. So because it is related to the council code of conduct, staff has no recommendation. We'll turn it over to you guys for any decision.
Steve, I'll take the floor to begin with here. Councilman Russo speaking. Yeah, we did take a section out of the code of conduct. And the next morning, I received some phone calls from employees in two different departments, department heads, and asking me, how can a council member have one code of conduct and us have another? And I do apologize for not really, really looking into it. And I think as a council member, that you're above and beyond, even after you're not on the council. I think if something happens to somebody in your family, they will refer him him or her to the person of a formal council member. I think council members are should be held, are and should be held to a higher standard. So with that being said, I want to put a motion on the floor to reinstate Section F and subsection five of the code of conduct and put it back where it was March twenty-first.
A motion on the floor.
Second.
Properly seconded. Any more discussion?
I'd like to talk for a minute. So last month, I did not engage in that conversation. And there was a methodical reason that I had not to engage in it because I did not approve the changes that were made to the code of conduct in twenty. Probably about three years ago, we were sitting in the same spot, two different council members than what are on the council today. And at the time, I felt the addition of the changes were very subjective. And in many ways, it felt like they were directed more towards me than anyone, any one individual. So I was on record in twenty eighteen of voting no against it, but voted no. Or I voted to remove it last month. And, you know, John, you made the comment, you've got to be better. And I agree with that. And since twenty eighteen, I've been just silently writing down what I've noticed. And when when we look at it, I really want to understand how the code of conduct works. Is it for one individual or is it for the whole council? Because, you know, just at its basis, when we look at, first off, there's two documents out there. The the one on the town council page is not even the current code of conduct. The one that is in am legal, I think, was the most current prior to last month, but there was not one for the changes from last month. So if I quote a section that's different, please forgive me because I'm trying to quote it between two different documents. But now, when we look at our basic responsibilities, the first thing is to inspire public confidence in the town of Harrisburg, Guttler. And in the last year, we've seen various news articles that would diminish this main tenant. If we go into Section D, D one, council conduct with one another. If we practice, it says practice civility and decorum and discussions and debates. We, as a council, have seen other council members tell someone to shut up. We've heard statements like, I'm not talking to you. Section D four, when we go through that, it says strive to demonstrate effective problem solving. E three, do not interrupt town staff. And that's section E is conduct with staff. But it says do not interrupt town staff from the jobs. You know, we see council members that go to job sites or work locations and that may be disruptive. E four, never publicly criticize an individual employee. We've seen that recently. When we look at Section F, council conduct with the public in unofficial settings. Again, this is where it starts to get sketchy because I'm not sure the exact section of quoting, but looks like Section F two B. Remember, the elected officials' actions are always being scrutinized. You know, there was a situation at a local establishment between council member and a resident at the time with other council members present. There was an email that went to employers, the residence employer. If we look at Section F two C, ensure accurate communication and information. I've we've seen information get posted on a Facebook page that indicates something different than what a project may be. If we look at Section I, conduct with the media, I one, the mayor is the official spokesperson for the town. We found last month that data went out that we didn't have not seen yet, an article written about it. Use of social media, elected officials should make all attempts to be consistent and united in the actions and decisions and the consensus of the town. And it further goes on to state that, you know, we're supposed to stay in there, this is my own, just my own. This post is my own and does not represent the town official position, strategy, or opinion. You know, we've seen previous council members do an op-ed. And while maybe the op-ed could be synonymous, and you would think it's their own opinion, the last one that came out on a previous council member with reference to a specific neighborhood. I know I was asked a few times if that was the consensus of the council or if that one individual. There's been podcasts that council members have participated in and have not made their statements saying that it was their opinion or they were representing the town. You know, I I've seen council members' emails get shared on Facebook sites without public records requests being received. So I just want to understand, do we enforce this for one individual or for everybody? And, you know, before you make your vote, I just want you to ask yourself that because I need to understand it, but I'm not gonna, I do not expect anyone to answer at this point.
Any more discussion?
So we did it after last. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rodney.
No, last month, we did ask about the policy for the town employees and the social media policy. We did receive that. The social media policy, I don't know what document it is in. I don't know the date it was initiated. I don't know when it was done, like I said. So when we talk about, do we want council to be different? Well, right now, we have four, we have four advisory boards. We also have the our if you look at all that across the board, it is all different. It doesn't say the same thing and it doesn't require the same thing. So when I personally did not get any emails except one saying that they supported what we did, but I never got one negative email. So I just want to bring that to the attention of everyone, that we already have differences across the whole whole gamut. So let's take that into consideration.
Any other council comments before we go to vote?
Yeah, I'll only add that, you know, Haynes and I talked a little bit about this and, you know, I said, well, you know, it's really not fair that, you know, we can't get any real legal look at this. He suggested that I contact Rich directly and, of course, our computer systems have been down, so that hasn't been an option for me. I'd also like to address Rick's point on whether it's something different for staff and council. And, excuse me, I'll point out that it's not, that staff's language is the same when it's considering them to be in an official conduct, official settings of the town, or when referencing the town. So that language is still still the same regardless. What I object to is unofficial and, most importantly, when it was brought up to try to add social media to it, especially because we, you know, we all know what this is about. This is about trying to shut people up and not express their opinions and their beliefs. And I think that's un-American and that's why I oppose it.
Just to add to that, I want to be clear. And Councilman Patrick, I explained this to you when we discussed one-on-one, is the town does have the authority to take disciplinary action against an employee for conduct detrimental to the town. And that is a broad statement, but it is a statement that you'll see in many personnel policies in other municipalities and cities that give the authority to management to take disciplinary action if an action, comments, words, social media posts, et cetera, can reflect poorly on the town or the business of the town. We've seen several municipalities in the area take action to even terminate employees for social media posts specifically. And that is something that we have made clear to our staff that that opportunity is there from a disciplinary perspective. When we implemented the town's social media policy for employees back in the spring of two thousand and eighteen, council subsequently followed that and agreed to abide by similar policies. That that was sort of the known thing back then. Now, from a legal standpoint, I will let Rich comment on, you know, whether or not we have that authority. But the detrimental conduct piece is present there. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, it's not necessarily apples to apples, but it's not as definitive as saying that what applies to council also applies to staff.
Mayor, I want to say one more thing and I'm done. You can say what you want, you're not taking away your First Amendment right. You can say whatever you want as a council member, but you have to own up to it. And that's what it's all about with me. Ron, I agree with a lot, a lot of stuff you said. It should be for everybody, there's not one person, I don't know who your one person is you're talking about, but it doesn't have a thing to do with your First Amendment right. You can say whatever you want, but you just have to own up to it after you say it. And I'm done.
Hey, Mayor. Councilman Selberg, I'm gonna go ahead and jump in here. And I'm going to encourage all of council to join me in the email that you received this morning from the North Carolina School of Government, where where they have invited us to the legal competency for local elected officials, where they talk in depth about the complexity of today's world and what goes on within social media and what our rights are moving forward. So I'm gonna do it and I'm gonna encourage you guys to join.
And we're able to count on what the ballot box, that was what I was reminded several times.
Any other comments from council before we go to vote? All right, we have a motion on the floor, properly seconded, all in favor, say aye going down the list. Councilman Ron. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Nay.
Councilman Ian.
Nay.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond.
Ad.
Motion carries. We will take a five-minute break. We've been going pretty strong for a good while, so you guys can take a bio break. And folks on the phone, we'll be back shortly. We'll go unmute in this room, so it won't make any noise for those listening on the phone. Again, we're going into new business. Consideration for approval of Caldwell Road sidewalk construction contract. And Rob told us that he would be definitely speaking for the next hour, so we'll go for your ride.
Maybe two. These are, this is, this is where the meeting gets exciting. First thing we have up is the Caldwell Road sidewalk project. Everybody can see my screen, right?
Yes.
So the, this project's been a long time coming. It started as a C Mac project, different funding. So we're really excited to finally bring it to a ward. So the proposed Caldwell Road sidewalk will connect two existing sections in town. And that area is really frequently walked by pedestrians and usually teenagers, even though there's no sidewalk there currently. The the improvement's being made on N C D O T route and we're using town funding for that. Red Clay Industries was the only bidder we had for this project, but the bid was within the engineer's estimate and within market price, so we are recommending award to that bidder. The sidewalk will extend approximately a half a mile and finish a pedestrian connection between Ace Academy near Tom Query Road on Caldwell and Highway forty-nine that that comes there at Harris Teeter. Work will begin this summer and is expected to be completed by the end of the calendar year. The total cost for this sidewalk is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. And staff is utilizing bond money for the project as well as other sidewalk projects throughout the town. The picture I have here is of a typical rapid red beacon crossing. This will be utilized about halfway through the project. There's a dip in the road, a clearing, where we'll move from the west side of the road. So the sidewalk starts on the west side of the road. Harris Teeter will come over the bridge and then the sidewalk picks up again on the east side near Ace Academy. So we'll do a roadway crossing with a active beacon and crosswalk there at the intersection. In addition to this project, we've also received quotes for Harris Depot Road, just to keep you guys up to to date on the sidewalk projects. And that'll provide a connection between forty-nine and the Harris Depot Park. And we're also looking at sidewalk projects along Stallings Road. It'll be installed in between Harmony and the Shay Holmes Project. And we've ensured those connections will have easy tie-in points as part of the design review. And then staff's also reviewing the feasibility of sidewalk connections along Hickory Ridge Road, including which side of the road would be best for the alignment and how that would tie into the Back Creek Greenway. That way, we would have a loop completely around that Rageon Ridge, Hickory Ridge, Stallings, around all the schools that would also tie into the greenways that would connect the neighborhoods throughout town. So the recommendation from staff is a motion to award a contractor Red Clay for two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars for the Caldwell Road sidewalk project and related reimbursement resolution. Are there any questions?
Hey, Rod, this is Rodney, Councilman Dellinger. The, but none of that money is actually for sidewalks on Stallings because you, right? You just put that comment in there to say.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to let you know, because the the funding for sidewalks that we've allocated is a lot higher than the two hundred and thirty-one thousand. So I just put that in there just as a point of reference, but this project is just the Caldwell portion and it's two hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Thank you. Move approval, Mayor.
A motion on the floor. Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye, Councilman Ron. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond. Motion carries. Consideration for approval, Rafferty Park Senator, Senator Kerry Sewer Rehab.
Yeah, a similar project that you you guys have seen, we do. Yeah, a similar, uh, project that you, you guys have seen, we do these, um, annually as a matter of course. This is our fiscal twenty-one sanitary sewer rehab construction portion. So as part of our sanitary sewer maintenance, the town maintains approximately a hundred and thirty miles of sanitary sewer that serve the businesses and the residents. Annually, we have to clean and inspect ten percent of those lines. Uh, but the cleaning doesn't address any inflow or infiltration. And that leads to a lot of groundwater that gets into the system. That can cause sewage volumes that exceed the capacity of the pipes, uh, decreases efficiency. And we also have to pay for that treatment. So we pay WOSAC and then, you know, to treat our sewer. And, um, they meter that regardless of it. It's groundwater, rainwater, the like. So anytime we have broken lines that are getting infiltration, um, it's a big cost burden to the residents. So the Bradford Park Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation was the next neighborhood that we're looking at. Um, to solve some of those issues, staff solicited requests for proposals and we selected major consulting, uh, previously to do the evaluation, to go in and camera everything, um, take evaluations, do the design work and identify, what was broken and what could be fixed. Bradford Park was initially constructed almost forty years ago, so there was, uh, quite a bit of deteriorating sewer throughout that neighborhood. And, um, the staff has worked to utilize trenchless technologies. So we tried to do as little interruption to the road a, as we can. Obviously it's a, it's a cost savings. Um, but it's also a time and headache savings for, for staff and residents. So we utilize a cast-in-place piping technology, uh, you can see on the pictures here where we use a jointless seamless, pipe product that lines the existing pipe and makes it function like new. So an old pipe that, that is deteriorated and, and rusted through may have holes in it. We'll grout that and, and go with this PVC liner that you see here. Some of the pipes will be replaced in sections, um, where we can't use this product, but those will be minimal. And then, um, also manholes will be rehabilitated at the time. So anywhere we're replacing or lining pipe in between manholes, we'll go into the manhole, clean it, rehab it, and then line and grout that manhole as well. This project was publicly bid and Amliner East was the lowest bidder. Town was pleased with Amliner's project history and we're recommending them as the, uh, to award the contract to for this project. The work will also begin this summer and is expected to be about a ninety-day completion. The construction contract is four hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred. The budget for this was five hundred and fifty thousand, so we were happy to, uh, deliver this one under budget and, uh, well, within our schedule. Staff recommendation is a motion to award contract to Amliner East for four hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars for Bradford Park Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project. Any questions?
Yeah, Rob, I got one. Um, Bradford Park isn't even in the city. So does that mean we still take care of their sanitation?
Yep. Yeah, they're still utility customers. And so the utilities there are ours, um, as well as Cabarrus Woods and, and several other areas in town.
Okay, thanks. You, if you recall, when Charlotte was moving their water and sewer opportunities on their side, they bought out the system that was tied to Cabarrus and Bradford Park. And at the time, they didn't want anything to do with it, so they turned it over to us.
Imagine that.
Lucky me.
The gift that keeps on giving for us.
Yeah.
You should want to let them keep, they had to sell it to us.
Right.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Properly seconded, all in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond. Next step, resolution to condemn Horton property for Morehead sewer construction.
Okay, um, the last item I have here is, uh, a condemnation for the Morehead West Sewer Project. Uh, for those of you not familiar, Morehead West area is identified as a location, uh, for substantial growth through private development. We also have a failing, uh, pump station, uh, about halfway to the area. So what town took apart, took on as a part of our CIP was replacing approximately forty-eight hundred lineal feet of twelve-inch gravity sewer and we're constructing that along Mallard Creek. The counts, the town is currently in the bidding permitting and easement acquisition phase. And we've worked through and obtained the necessary easements all the way along the alignment. The only property that we've been unsuccessful to date to get easement acquisition on is this Horton property. The problem with it is we discovered that the property owner passed away several years ago and members of the estate have not been reachable. And, uh, further than that, the state has not paid taxes on this property. It's a small landlocked parcel. They haven't paid taxes in over a decade. And, um, so due to just the inability to reach the property owners, it having a negative equity hold. So that, that causes some property liability issues. The town is seeking condemnation of the property. Um, again, property information, um, the easement located here, you can see on the pictures, a very small point oh-two-one, acres for temporary and point zero-one-seven permanent easement. We, we really can't move it due to the, where the wetlands are located around here. And to destroy those wetlands and to go through a mitigation process would be approximately twenty thousand dollars more. And it would cost additional survey and permitting, which would delay the project and really push our, our permitting into a different fiscal year. The total easement area is point oh-three-eight acres or about sixteen hundred square feet. And, um, our recommendation is just a motion to condemn the Horton property for Morehead West Sewer Construction Project. I've, uh, we've sent this through the rich, so I'll turn it over, Rich, if you have any comments or anything you'd like to add that, uh, I didn't get to there.
Yeah, let me just mention a couple of things. I was hoping that we could, it could be relocated. And so we talked to Matt, Rob and Mallory about that, because the title on that, this property, even for that small, small easement, is a real mess. The guy passed away back in two thousand and six, six. As Rob, Rob said, there's been no taxes paid on, on the property since then. And he's got four kids and they're spread out in different places. And we're trying to locate all them because they're actually the owners of the property now. He did have an estate, but there wasn't any money in the estate. Uh, his brother actually handled the estate of Salisbury. And, uh, so we're just having to work through a bunch of issues with reference to, to any condemnation on this property. It's just gonna be a mess to do it, but there's no other, um, alternative to it. I would ask that as part of the motion that you, uh, do the, uh, resolution that's in the packet. Because we'll need that in order to be able to condemn on this property.
Rich, this is Councilman Dillinger. While, while you're there, I have a question. Well, normally I'm not for condemning property. But that's ten years, they've not paid for it. And a hundred dollars is a minor, about, uh, a minor amount. But will that hundred dollars, since you can't find the, um, heirs, will it go into the states as cheated fund?
Well, it, it probably would. You know, it's hard for me to say that at this point, but that's what, that's what ends up happening if, uh, if the heirs don't, um, don't claim it. Because what we have to do when we condemn is we have to, uh, we file the lawsuit. Uh, we have to post the money with the clerk of court. So that hundred dollars would go into the clerk's office. And then, you know, we have to get everybody served. We gotta find all of them. And then, you know, once they're served, they have a hundred and twenty days to answer the, the complaint. And a, after that, you know, they can apply to take out the deposit or they can just leave it there. And if, you know, once the time to answer is run, if they don't, um, file an answer, then we can get a default against them. We could proceed to, um, um, to finish up the, the lawsuit. Now we do, uh, for this type of condemnation, once we file, we actually get titled to the easement at that point. So it's what's called the quick take. So it won't hold up the project, you know, one, once we are in the position to file, which we will be in about thirty days. I have to send them a letter in advance of, of, I have to wait till you all pass the resolution. And I can send them a letter and we can get on the property, uh, and they can do testing and whatever they need to do for the project. But then we can't file for another thirty days. And, and like I say, at that point when we file, we actually get titled to the easement, so.
That sounds like it would, you would have hoped that you could have moved it, made it a whole lot easier.
Pardon me?
It sounds like you, you, if you'd been able to move the, the actual part of the sewer line, it would be easier than what you're going to go through.
Well, that, that's true. That's why, you know, I asked Rob and Mallory to look into that, because I realized that, that for this title, I mean, it doesn't, on title work, it doesn't matter. You can have the cleanest title in the world for the most expensive piece of property. You can have the cheapest piece of property and the title's a mess. And unfortunately, this one's a mess. So I tried to see if there would be some other way to route the sewer line to go around this property. And it turns out that's not available to us. So we're just gonna have to do it if, if we're gonna do this project, so.
Move for approval, Mayor.
So, uh, Rich, are we gonna, do you want to, can we add the, uh, in this motion to also approve the resolution that, in the packet? That's one motion.
If you would, just make a part of the same motion.
Okay. Rich, if you could, uh, make a motion to condemn the property at Morehead West, including the approval of the resolution in our packet.
Like the, condemn the property of Morehead West and include the resolution that's in our packet.
Got a motion on the floor? Properly seconded. All in favor, say aye. Councilman Ron. Councilman John. Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond. Motion carries. Moving to the fourth of July.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Shasha and, uh, council. You guys sure know how to keep the new guy up at night. Uh, it's, uh, a pleasure to be here, uh, with you folks this evening. I don't care how late it is. So, um, uh, this year's, uh, Harrisburg July Fourth Festival, uh, happens to fall in a crazy, uh, every so often calendar year time of July third and July fourth being Saturday and July fourth being Sunday. And, uh, that creates an issue for us in that the parade is usually held on July fourth. And, uh, uh, I'm told that that creates an issue with the many churches along Route forty-nine, uh, that, uh, have Sunday church services when it's about the same time that we hold the parade. So, uh, we wanted to come to you to get some, uh, direction, uh, from you folks and some of your input, uh, with some different options, uh, three different options. Uh, being July third and fourth, uh, with the normal parade on Sunday morning, which will give us the problem with the church. Uh, the other options are July, uh, third and fourth, uh, still hold the event those two days, but the parade being moved to Saturday, the third. Uh, and just hold that Saturday morning. Or the other option, uh, move the event to July second and third, uh, Friday and Saturday with the parades being on Saturday again. Uh, that, right now we have Grand Funk Railroad scheduled in the, uh, new amphitheater, uh, for July fourth. Um, so if we did that, we'd either have to maintain the July fourth event, uh, to have Grand Funk Railroad pay and it'd be almost a three-day event or move them to July third, uh, which we can do there, open to that. It would cost us some extra money in, uh, getting them here on a different day. So those are the three options. Um, I, I defer to you. Uh, some of you have been here a little bit longer to see if, uh, we've, uh, you know, run into this problem before, uh, we believe that it was, uh, a few years ago and we did, uh, move the parade to Saturday. So those are your options and I, uh, leave, uh, uh, all input to you guys and, uh, see which direction you want to go.
Yeah, Jim, this is, uh, Councilman Selberg. I served on the, uh, Fourth of July committee for a number of years. And you are correct, we did run into this in the past. But one of the other problems that we ran into, I don't know that you've, uh, made aware of, is on Sunday, how, uh, how early are you going to open up the park and when is the band gonna start playing?
Uh, the, the band is a, uh, eve, obviously evening. We don't, we won't open the event until four o'clock. Uh, and the band will be an evening event. I, I'm not sure next start time, uh, Councilman Selberg.
And that's on Sunday, correct?
Correct.
All right, because we had run into some problems earlier, having Sunday events with, uh, some of the churches that are adjacent to the property. So I just want to make sure that we give them ample time to, uh, to have their services and allow their people egress, um, so that they're not caught up in the mess.
Yes, um, that shouldn't be a problem. And, uh, you know, I am aware, I spoke with, uh, Sean this afternoon, uh, at, at length about the different, uh, issues that we would run into, uh, by, uh, you know, flip-flopping and different things. You know, generally, uh, Saturday is a big, uh, the July third is usually a big setup day. And it, you know, it makes it kind of flow into Sunday, but, um, and talking to her, she didn't see us being in a big issue if we wanted to move the parade to the third and, uh, still maintain Grand Funk Railroad for Sunday night. And, uh, again, the program wouldn't start till, uh, we, we wouldn't open the park till four o'clock for, uh, the event.
I'm in favor of the Saturday, Sunday event, but I'm also not opposed to a, to a Friday night activity, uh, if staff still sees fit for a three-day event.
Jim, I got one for you too. I'm good with the Friday, Saturday. And just do the, do the Grand Funk Railroad on Sunday night. It'd be nice to get two days in with the rides and we can make some money on that. So I would do the second and third where the parade would be on.
It'd be a three-day, Rich, so you'd say, then the second, third and fourth.
Yep, that's me. Because all you're, all you're gonna do on Sunday is have the, uh, Grand Funk Railroad.
So would you, you'd do the parade on Saturday? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And Troy, you say parade on Saturday?
Yeah, it's basically the same thing he said. If we could do like, open the park up Friday.
Let's say, say with the parade first and then we'll go back to when.
Yeah.
What do you, Friday, Saturday? Ron? Saturday? Saturday, right? Alright, so it looks like the parade's on Saturdays. We solved that for you, Jim.
Okay, very good.
I'm kidding. So now we'll talk about, uh, Grand Funk. So we want them on Sunday or Saturday? I hear one Saturday.
Saturday. Saturday will cost more money.
Like, it'd be so much more.
It'll be about five thousand dollars more to get them, uh, here.
Tell them to come on Sunday. They're moving back to Sunday. Is, is everybody good with, with Grand Funk planned on Sunday?
Yeah.
When are the fireworks?
And the fireworks on Sunday as well?
My question too, yes. Do we want to, uh?
It's Saturday.
Saturday.
And Sunday fireworks. So it looks like the only thing that's changed so far, except we'll talk about Friday and second, is the parade moves to Saturday and everything kind of stays to court.
So, so we would go July second with just an event?
Now, Friday, if you wanted to do something, obviously, we, I mean, maybe get some fans out there to kind of kick off the weekend. Maybe some local entertainment.
That's a good idea. Okay, let's, uh, let's work on that. I'll, let me get, uh, with Sean.
Or even let some of the, uh, yeah, let just local talent get there, have a little talent show.
Food trucks.
Food trucks and, uh.
All right. So the, the Friday was going to be the big staging day, what, if we were going to have the event on Saturday and Sunday. So we'll have to work with the vendors, the amusement park, uh, folks, the, you know, food vendors, the craft vendors, all of that. So we will have to sort of coordinate what their setup would be on Friday.
Just have a Friday, uh, four o'clock kickoff, the whole weekend.
Hey, but Haynes, Haynes, if we, we're not gonna do much Sunday, so that's why I think we need to do Friday and Saturday, because Sunday's just gonna be Grand Funk Railroad.
I think Sunday's gonna be.
It'll be wide open.
A wide open day of amusements and food and everything, a day full of music.
I mean, what time are you gonna start the event on a Sunday? I mean, you're gonna have.
It starts at four o'clock, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you're not gonna open before four for sure. You're not gonna open at one o'clock with games.
Yeah, and I guess the main reason we open at four is because the, the heat can be, uh, unguise.
That's, that's another reason why we've moved it to that.
Fireworks after Grand Funk?
Correct, correct. And, so, you know, the big thing is July second is usually a setup day, so, uh, Haynes is correct. We, we'd have to get with vendors and stuff, but let's, let's, let me get with Sean and see if there's an opportunity there to do something on Friday that, uh, wouldn't create, uh, you know, a, a, a tough scenario for everybody involved. So, but we know we want to go July third and fourth, Saturday, uh, uh, parade, Sunday, uh, Grand Funk with also a continuation of, uh, rides and, and vendors, that kind of stuff.
We good?
Yep, we'll put some information and additional costs together, if any, for doing a Friday night event.
We'll do that.
So we don't need to vote on that, right? I think everybody's good?
Yep.
Alright, moving right along. Parents.
One more thing here regarding Harrisburg Park and events there. In the past, when you had your Rockin' the Bird programs concert series, when it was held at Town Center, alcohol was allowed at those events without too many issues, from what I'm told. It was halted when the series was moved to Harrisburg Park, I believe, a couple summers ago. And, and since then, we now have that dedicated area of the amphitheater and the lawn where we're able to handle large events and to allow, you know, alcohol sales and different other, you know, vendors and opportunities. And we think that that could impact attendance positively for some of our events coming up. As some of you may know, we have the, on May eighth, our first concert, and we will be having the, the Embers there, and they, they draw very well. And then, June, the second Saturday in June, I forgot the date, we'll have the Charlotte Symphony in amphitheater for the evening, and that draws very well, from what I'm told. And so we are asking you to consider the baronets of section ninety-seven point oh E of the Town Code Ordinance to allow alcohol sales at the Rockin' the Bird Concert Series for twenty twenty-one.
And this would just be for the concert series, nothing in council? And I remember we went through each of that, we would either add it or subtract it, council could decide. We went through several iterations of how this is gonna go.
Yeah, basically suggesting a special event permit for specific events. And so this request is just for the Rockin' the Bird Concert Series. And Jim, will you outline as well that it is not the town serving alcohol, that we would hire a, a third-party vendor to provide that, and they'd be responsible for all licensing, serving, they'd have to have proper bartenders, and that they also hold the liability for that. So if they over serve someone in, within the program, and say that individual leaves the, the property and is in an accident, or gets a DUI, that the ABC license and liability fall with the vendor, not with the town Harrisburg.
That's correct, Haines. We would obviously control, help with the control by having fences, you know, fencing in the head, make sure that everything stays within fence area. There will be rest bans and what have you to make sure that everybody's of age. And yes, we would partner with the local breweries, we hope, would be very interested in going out, you know, given the, the lack of business and things that they had to deal with over the last year with COVID, they might be very interested. And we know we've actually spoken with a few, a couple already, that they would be interested. So yes, we would contract out with them as a third-party, and they would handle the sales and responsibilities for that. With the town, we would not be in the alcohol sales business.
We would increase police coverage as a result of that. That'd be our responsibility.
There's.
So they would also incorporate the cost of monitoring officers, I guess.
Yeah.
This is Councilman Selberg. If you could make sure that within your contract, it says that all servers are, are safe-serve certified. The state does a very good job with that, but some of the craft breweries slipped through the cracks on their servers for that. Just make sure contractually we're covered that way, and I think we'll be fine.
I agree. I will, we'll make sure, that's for sure.
This is Council.
Hang on a second, Rick, we got Councilman.
This is Councilman Delinger. I'd like to take a few minutes and talk to this. This is, I'm against it, and I'd like to tell you why. This is a new venue. This is a venue that now will seat and allow twenty thousand people on grass. It's closer to the college. I believe that when the bird was here at the Town Center, it might have been just a little further, even though it was a mile for college students. But now that you have a twenty-seat, twenty thousand-seat grass amphitheater that we will be attracting more college students to come over the line and attend those concerts. You know, one of the biggest things is keeping the children safe. Keeping those who go to the park to take their children, to ride their rides, six, seven, eight years old. And I'll go back to a little bit when we were talking about the park here in the last couple of months. There was like three gates around part of the playground, and we, we took them away. Well, I, I've gone back and thought about that, in that it was probably done for a reason and should have had four sides because it helps keep those that are riding those rides, that are playing and swinging, safe, and their parents can keep an eye on them. You know, it's very funny. We started this meeting out today with Alcohol Awareness Month. And here we are now talking about allowing alcohol in the park. It talks about excessive alcohol consumption is associated with risky behavior, violent, suicide, homicide, vehicular accidents, and is the third leading cause of preventable death in North Carolina. I, as others in this room, have had a loved one killed by a drunk driver. So when I hear it said that we are not liable, we are, we are liable, and I'd like Rich to talk on that in a minute. And, you know, Oprah Winfrey has done stories and interviewed people that had one drink and went out and killed someone. You've got to remember that when, when adults or even anybody just sets a drink aside, if you're six years old, you're five years old, you're seven years old, you're eight years old, they can come by and pick it up. When you have parents out there, and they may get a little involved, and they say, oh, well, son, go over and play, and the swing's set. And then at the tweak of an eye, they're gone. I just, I just am very concerned about this. You know, what is the next step when cannabis comes? Are we gonna have a cannabis section that says, oh, let's ring them off, here's where you can smoke cannabis? You sure can't smoke cigarettes, right? I just think that we need, as a town, and we talk about, we're recognizing collectively impacts of parents, teachers, coaches, medical professionals, faith leaders, public and private organizations. I really want us to think about this. And I think that we can have just as much fun in the park and enjoy it just as much as if we do not allow alcohol to be served for these events. And now, Jim, I know in the last, you know, in the plant, in the park and rec, that you did survey them and that they did not have a problem with it, and that they wanted it, but here again, number one, keep the kids safe. So, and I did ask Haines about the, this afternoon, about the insurance consideration. He said that the five thousand dollars covered that. But I think if you have a good lawyer, and Rich, please help me, if you have a good lawyer, we're sponsoring the event, even though we're not serving it, we're condoning it. Can you please speak on that?
Well, we're talking about what they call gram shop liability. That's, that's the name that they use for serving alcohol and, and the, the problems that can come from, from serving it and the liability that would flow from that. You can actually control that through your agreements, even though you might be the, the owner of the property. We, we can handle that through agreements with the people who are, who are serving it. So that part can, can be taken care of, but there are other issues that, like you raised. But on the legal side, I say it can be, it can be handled in such a way with the agreements that the town wouldn't have any risk. That can be done, so.
Thank you, Rich. And the last word is to be good stewards, and I, and how many times this year have we heard the town being liable? This really, if we can't legally be liable, we are morally liable. Thank you.
Mayor, I got one thing to add. I just think if the college kids are gonna go anywhere, they're gonna go to PNC Park. I don't think we're gonna get bands that are gonna attract them here because of price, so.
And just for clarity, is it ten thousand or twenty thousand? I thought it was ten thousand.
Yeah, so it was a meet, it was originally designed to hold about ten thousand, but with Field Five and the overflow area going up the hill towards the amenity center, we haven't officially calculated it, but it's, it's definitely north of fifteen thousand. To point that out, though, due to the governor's orders currently, I think we're restricted to around seven hundred participants, and we're requiring pre-registration for the Embers concert that's coming up. I think we already have over four hundred, or roughly four hundred people that have pre-registered for that, so that's awesome. But for these early concerts, there will be a cap of the number of people that can attend of seven hundred, and they do have to pre-register.
So what's the radius of the circle, as far as during that event? How far are they allowed to travel with that? I mean, if I had a kid at the water park, can I take my beer over there?
Yeah, so it, it's actually gonna be a lot different. When we had alcohol served by ABC licensed vendors here in Town Center, we roped off what was vacant, the Novant block, which was the entire center block. And you could basically meander and move wherever you wanted to within that fence in Town Center. In this particular instance, we will not have the entire amphitheater roped off. We will have a small sort of beer garden roped off section of the amphitheater. And you will not be allowed alcohol outside of that fence. So if you had a beer and you wanted to go see your kid at the playground, you would not be able to take that beer with you to the playground. You couldn't, only if your seat was inside the fenced-off area of the beer garden. And then.
I'm assuming no kids are allowed in the beer garden.
That's correct. Yeah, you have to be twenty, you know, your ID is checked at the gate of the beer garden to get in, so that when you go up and order a beer, the bartender knows you're over twenty.
Right, I mean.
I can tell you, I've been to Fourth of July, I've watched people drink alcohol in parks.
I mean, people do. And that's why I'm curious, are we gonna have staff looking for alcohol?
There are people, it's supposed to have police officers running around. That's part of it, right?
We have traditionally not had staff enforce or go check coolers, because people bring it in from the outside, right? I mean, it just, it happens, and we know that it happens, and there's nothing that we do to restrict or enforce that. Now, obviously, if someone is openly carrying their alcohol, staff or law enforcement would go and address them. Or if an individual was belligerent or acting inappropriately, law enforcement and staff would address them in that manner. But we don't go checking coolers.
Thank you. So how are we gonna govern the seven hundred people? How, how is that when you can go in off a Harris depot and you can get in? How are we gonna ensure seven hundred people are only gonna get in there?
The, the plan is to obviously have sealed off with entrances into the amphitheater area, and you'll have, there's a system, I'm not quite sure how it works yet, I know April's working on it. But it's, I believe, on your phone or some kind of thing, you, you click in so you know you're pre-registered. You have to have that to get in.
But physically, there could be more than seven hundred people in the park? There's only gonna be seven hundred people in the amphitheater?
That's, that's while we're allowed, based on the governor's orders, based on COVID, based on our square footage. We figured it out to be about seven hundred people at this time.
Mayor, motion approved.
Got a motion on the floor.
Exactly.
Property seconded.
Any more discussion? This is just Rockin' the Bird.
This, Jim, I can notice for each event, we will have the same conversation.
The, the request for tonight is to approve all of the individual dates for the Rockin' the Bird Concert Series. That's in the, it's in the packet.
Alright, so it is from. We have a motion on the floor, property second. Any more discussion before I go? All in favor say aye, Councilman Ron.
Aye.
Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond. Motion carries. Moving to.
Last one, folks, for me.
Hang on, one second, one second.
The symphony, and the mayor, I mean, symphony's always charged us like a thirty thousand dollar fee. Was that money just already parked there, or we haven't allocated for?
Yeah, so it was new money spent per year. With the new budget, we allocated dollars for the Rockin' the Bird Concert Series. Our costs with the symphony this year are substantially lower. More than half of our expense used to be associated with rental of stage and audio and all of that stuff. So now that we have our own constructed amphitheater, we actually are able to save quite a bit of money by inviting the symphony to perform with us. Jim, do you have an exact dollar amount for the symphony?
I don't, I want to say, I thought I heard April in discussions say, was it twelve grand, maybe? It was.
Wow, okay, yeah, significantly less than the thirty-eight thousand we spent last time.
Folks, don't quote me on that, but I believe that's what it was.
If you could get that to just, to note out to council, that'd be great, if you could add that to your.
I'll get that, I'll get that number tomorrow and get, get it to Haines, and he can get it to you, folks.
Alright, you're up again, I guess, Arts, Culture, Heritage Committee.
Yes, the, we have some Harrisburg Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee people up for appointment. They are all reappointments this year. The advertisement went out, I think it was out for four weeks, is what Sean told me. And the only three people that showed interest and applied were current members, Micah Cash, Jeet Hiramath, and Tony Wheeler Jenski. And they are, they're all incumbents, but want to continue to serve. And I know they all do a great job and show an awful lot of initiative and really enjoy it. So recommendation, obviously, from the Parks Advisory Board, as it's a subcommittee of theirs, is to appoint those three citizens.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor.
Aye.
Property second, all in favor say aye, Councilman Ron. Councilman John.
Aye.
Councilman Rodney.
Aye.
Councilman Ian.
Aye.
Councilman Rick.
Aye.
Councilman Troy.
Aye.
Councilman Diamond. Motion carries. The back page, action items.
All right, action items from last month's meeting. Updating the Harrisburg Park information on the town's website, which we were able to do that week following that council meeting. There's also a request to look into the timing of the light at the intersection of Roberta and Highway forty-nine in the evening for allowing a number of cars through on the left turn. We have reached out to NC DOT on that, but have not received any follow-up communication. So we'll be sure to reach back out to NC DOT on that front to get an update. There was also a request to ask NC DOT to participate in a future meeting, and we've reached out for that, and we're just trying to time when that individual will be able to attend, but that should be in the next month or two. Another item was to prioritize transportation projects, which we were able to do during a budget workshop. We were asked to look at sustainability bylaws update, which we did earlier tonight. So those are all the old action items, and then the action items from tonight. We're gonna look into Middleport Road and the road issues there, and whether that's us or NC DOT. We'll wait for more to come, and as far as direction from council related to CHA and their Asian hate initiative. And then we'll bring to council and be asking for direction on the mask mandate at the park at our next meeting as well, our next budget workshop. So those are any, those are the items that I have, if there's any one other.
You didn't miss this, because we didn't bring it up, so I'm just gonna throw one at you right now.
I sent it to your phone, House Bill four oh one and SB three forty-nine. Boone has already come out with a resolution against both of these. House Bill four oh one is in reference to taking out rezoning from the cities and putting in duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, anywhere and everywhere. And it seems to be pushed by, the way it's written, it seems to be pushed by the VRBO folks or the rental industry, and why they would be pushing it doesn't make any sense. The other is the three forty-nine, which states that if a commercial entity presents you with a plan that has been designed professionally, you're gonna give them a permit within fifteen days. If you question them, and I'm sure I got it, I don't have all the legalese on it, but if you question them and require more information, then it's fifteen days from that date, no more than thirty. And Boone is saying it's gonna cost them a ton of money in staff to be able to support this, just that three forty-nine. Now, we all know that stuff could die, and never make, make it, but.
I bet you that's resolutions, right?
Yeah, they did pass a resolution. Yeah, they did press a resolution.
It sounded like that's something we should probably either consider doing that as well or maybe it's not bothering us, but it doesn't sound good.
We can prepare a resolution and get that back to council. We can even, if it's okay with council, add it to potentially a budget workshop agenda just so we don't have to wait another day.
I mean, these buzzin' eyes are.
And they're saying 401 is almost disguised as affordable housing. But there's nothing affordable in it.
Yeah, I'm familiar with those and we can put together a resolution of denial for those.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I did, when I sent you an email, Harmony Acres, there's a resident that lives, not sure exactly, must be in your neighborhood, in Flowers. She buss up to the property, she's got significant water issues and just spent $11,000 on French drains. She also thinks as a result of the road going in, it's a little bit higher than where she is, the water runoff is going to continue to go into her yard. And obviously, if she's, can't handle having that problem. And I know they're in the early stages of water mitigation, but they typically have to account for the water before they start doing anything crazy. And apparently, again, she's $11,000 into French drains to resolve the water coming into her property. You've got to, there's about five items that's listed in there.
Will that staff follow up on?
Collect to that.
Alright, are we good? On that, so we do have a closed session, the national team has to go into closed session. Move, motion on the floor.
Second.
I was saying, all favors going to go with say aye.
Steve just seconded link for that in their inbox from Jim.